Welcome to the 6:30 February 23, 2021 Titusville City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which the reading does govern all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you read the rules of speak, please?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of three minutes regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you very much. We move forward. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 8?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. City Manager, would you please introduce the very, very special recognitions we have tonight?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. We are on Agenda Item 5A, Special Recognition and Presentations, and we'd like to recognize the Water Resources Department Field Operations Division as our employees of the month for December 2020. And Mr. Stauffer and Mr. Weiner, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening. Sean Stauffer, Water Resources Director. Just want to take a few minutes to thank the gentleman behind me for all of their efforts that they worked for many days throughout the night around the clock during Christmas on one of the toughest forced main breaks that we've had here in the city. And so I'm very proud tonight to honor them as the Employees of the Month for December, and I'll take a few minutes here to list their names because I want to make sure that each one is recognized individually. The team members were John Masakone, Darian Fears, Ryan Brown, Henry Carmichael, Billy Little, Chris Watkins, Bruce Fairweather, Joel Miller, Jeff Harvey, Kyle Colvin, Tom Marinelli, Tom Perez, Steve Vanetta, Mario Grant, Scott Devine, Mike Green, Doug Larkins, and also Jeff Weiner. And he joins me here at the table today. He is the Superintendent of Field Operations, and not only is he the Superintendent, but he is also part of these Employees of the Month, and I'll just give it over to him just for a few minutes. I'm sure he has a few kind words as well.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Just want to say it's an honor and privilege working for the city. My team feels the same way. We come to work and do it day in and day out. We really appreciate getting the award tonight. It means a lot. But I, you know, it's like everything else. You can't do it. We preach team around here, but you can't do it without a great team. And I'm very fortunate to be a leader of these great men and women that work for me. They're highly skilled, very knowledgeable, and great at what they do, and Titusville is very lucky to have all of them here. And last but not least, I also want to mention, when we talk about team, sometimes things come with positions that's expected. And I know the names weren't read tonight, but I also think we also need to recognize our Water Resources Director, Mr. Stauffer, and our City Manager, Scott LaReese, their leadership through this whole thing, being in contact with them on what's going on and things like that. Like, sometimes things are taken for granted because of the positions they're in, but definitely some great leadership there, especially over the holiday, and they were involved just as much. They may not have been shoveling, digging dirt, but they were there behind the scenes a lot that people do not see what was going on. And I know there's some tough decisions that had to be made, and they made them and helped us, so I also want to acknowledge them. Thank you. Thank you. I would like to say that we are blessed and privileged to have you work for us, and while I wasn't out there on a daily basis like them, I was probably there five, six, seven, eight times, different times of the day. And every single time, you guys are not only out there getting it done, but you're willing to tolerate me and tell me what was going on. And I tried not to be that guy, but it's kind of a big deal. So with that, very honored to have you guys here, and as I noted earlier, this is a very, very special group to meet you guys. Take it while you can get it, kind of have some celebrity status going on today. So with that said, City Manager, you want to go forward?
Yes, sir. If I could have you come down. First off, Jeff, we've never really done a whole department like this, but on behalf of the city of Titusville, the mayor, who is coming, please accept with our gratitude a plaque for the Water Resources Department Field Operations Division.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And then Jeff here, it is an award for you personally, as well as a little, nice little thing for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Seriously, without your leadership, we could be in trouble. So thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Hold on, hold on. I got to get this thing down. It's my rookie year.
Mr. Mike Green. Mr. Scott Devine. Mario Grant. Steve Vanetta.
We're going to figure this thing out by then, Scott. Thank you so much.
Mr. Tom Perez. Tom Marinelli. Kyle Halman. Jeff Harvey.
Come on, Jeff.
Joel Miller. Mr. Bruce Fairweather. Chris Watkins. Billy Little. Henry Carmichael. Ryan Brown. Darian Fears. Jeff Masakone. Okay, so I've been assured that we can get a wide-angle photo of everybody up here because I got to hand these out to you. So if I can get all the recipients to come back up here and do the shot.
Team photo. Running backs in the front, linemen in the back.
Linebackers in the middle.
All right, I'm a short guy. I got to be a short man. I got one to do. I'm short, I got to do.
I know nobody wants to, but we might have to have some people take a knee. It won't be me. I'll get back out. You good?
Okay, hang on there. This is the real goods, right here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sean's probably working that way. Thank you, guys.
You got one here? All right, I guess I got a few left.
Guys, thank you very much. I appreciate it. You won't be rude if you don't stay till 10:30. Wait one second here. City Manager, I'd like to move the proclamations up to this time.
Yes, sir. Those are on your mayor's report, so if you'd like to do those now...
What I would need to do is I need a motion to move them from the mayor's report to, what, 5B?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move your proclamations to... You want to do 5B, you said?
I think that's where it's at, I'm guessing.
You could go 5A and a half if you want.
5E and a half? Okay, 5E and a half.
That's good.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
All right, very good. Sir, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, sir. I have two proclamations. I'll read both, and the first one is a proclamation of the city of Titusville. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the impacts of COVID-19 crisis, and whereas we honor the stories of parish medical centers' employees facing daily staffing challenges, depression, stress, grief, concerns, and fears while on the front lines of this pandemic, and whereas the heroic work displayed by parish medical center employees and community partners as they strain to keep themselves and others safe from being exposed to COVID-19, while continuing to deliver exceptional service to others suffering from a number of medical emergencies, and whereas the city of Titusville applauds the absolute heroic work of the entire staff of Parish Medical Center, including the emergency room department, frontline providers who dedicate their lives every day to take care of our citizens. Now, therefore I, Daniel E. Diesel, by the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim February 1, 2021, as Parish Medical Center's Heroes Work Here Day in the city of Titusville, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observation. Signed, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor.
Before you do anything else, let's clap. I get the opportunity upfront to say an awful lot of things, positive things about parish and what they do. It's a wonderful healthcare facility, but I say it over and over again, they're part of our community. They make a difference in everything they do, and it is truly a wellness place, but it's also a wellness place for our entire city. And Mr. McKeaterian's leadership is second to none. I've gotten to know him for quite a few years now, and he not only cares about parish and the people of parish and the workers of parish and the patients of parish, but he cares
Parish Medical Center, and, two, having you all as our governmental body that represents
about our city, and he cares about it a lot. And I thank him so very much. Thank you.
this city for which we serve. Thank you, sir. You've been complimentary, supportive, helpful for the 25 years I've been in this community. I hope that we've done you proud. We appreciate everything that you, all the city employees, do behind the scenes in helping us. Your city managers have always been supportive, fire, police, emergency response people. It does take a team, and we like to think that we're part of your team and vice versa. On behalf of everyone at Parish Medical Center, a couple of the board members here, here tonight, we couldn't do it without your support, and we will continue to do our best to make you all very proud of your local Parish Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next proclamation, official proclamation of the city of Titusville, Florida, is hereby proclaimed by the mayor and the city of Titusville, Brevard County, Florida, that whereas across the nation situations of racial violence, harassment, and discrimination still persist in our society, and whereas the death of George Floyd and others have prompted a national focus on the creation of a more equitable systems regarding race, and whereas the group of diverse community volunteers have come together to establish the Humanity Task Force whose mission is to end racism throughout education, whereas the Humanity Task Force will promote racial bias training, community workshops, in a concerted effort to raise awareness in our community and beyond, and whereas the city of Titusville recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is its diversity of community and that all people are created equal with that of liberty endowed by our Creator, and whereas the city appreciates the efforts of the Humanity Task Force in celebrating resiliency and immeasurable contributions of our African-American community members. Now, therefore I, Daniel E. Diesel, by the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim that Titusville supports the Humanity Task Force in their work to guide our community, and I encourage all people in our area to honor the diversity and promotion of inclusion and equal protection under the law. And I further encourage all community stakeholders to join me in eliminating discriminatory practices and policies towards any culture, race, or group. Signed, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor.
First of all, I want to say I can't think of a more sincere... Come on, Maggie. I can't think of a more sincere, outstanding, incredible, thoughtful, and needed task force in our world, in our society, in our city today. And I said, I don't remember exactly when it was, but when you stood up here and spoke with such sincerity, I felt like I could listen to you all day. It wasn't just because you have a great voice and you're a good-looking kid, it's because what you were saying was important, and what you were saying, you said like it was important. And I appreciate both of you being here today, and before I do this, I'm going to ask if you guys have a word you want to say, because I like to listen to you talk.
Well, on behalf of the entire Humanity Task Force, we just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all of the city councilmen for, you know, just appreciating the work that we've started to do and the work that we will continue to do, and thank you for recognizing that it's very important to not only the entire world, but our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys personify, and this organization personifies a term that I say a lot, and it's "together, we can make a difference." And that's all that you guys are trying to do here. Pull us together to make a difference, and I appreciate that, and I hope this says that to you. So with that, I guess we take a picture or two. I will just put that right there. Is that good? Thank you so much.
And Mayor and Council, we are now on Agenda Item 5B, Letters of Appreciation, that I'd like to read for the record. From Community Development, Lori Darji, Mr. Eddie Galindo, Chris Enright, Brad Parrish, and Gabriel Quintez. From Neighborhood Services, Ms. Tracy Davis, Terry Franklin, Rose Conig, Gerarda Loeb, and Justin Pouncy. And from our Legal Department, Chelsea Farrell.
Thank you very much, and I hope that we hear those names. Sometimes it doesn't seem enough just to read the name, but your names and your effort mean a lot to us, and I appreciate that, and thank you for taking the time in this organization to throw those names up there every month. Okay, City Manager, we move on.
On to Boards and Commission, Item 6A, the Planning and Zoning Commission Semi-Annual Report, as presented. It is in your packet along with the emails that we had received for this meeting. It's in your yellow folder. And no action is required.
No action required. We move on to 6B.
Planning and Zoning Commission, accept the resignation of Member Mary Murray with a term to expire on 31 January 31, 2020. Ms. Murray's resignation was effective February 5, 2021. Currently, there is one vacancy for a regular member with an expired term to expire on January 31, 2022. There are five applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Danny Aton, Mr. Christopher Childs, Mr. Robert Johnston, Mr. Linwood, Woody Rice, alternate member, have all expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member with an expired term to expire on January 31, 2022. Alternate member Kathleen Riley does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time.
At this time, we need to accept Mary Murray's resignation, correct? Any comment or motion on that?
I'd move to...
Go ahead.
Did I do it? I'd move to accept the resignation of regular member Mary Murray.
Second.
And I have a second. Hold that vote. Do I need to call cards on this? On the second part, okay. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, we now must move to the appointment of a regular member to the PNZ Board. Council, do we have discussion?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe in longevity and service. I suggest, recommend that if one of the alternates showed interested in moving forward, I think that they should be given the opportunity to do that.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, I think we only have one alternate, right? The other alternate wasn't interested.
That's correct, sir.
Is that correct? So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Robinson, which means that would be Mr. Woody Rice should move from alternate to permanent member.
City Attorney?
Yeah, correct. At this point, we'll need cards on the side.
I'm not done yet here. Vice Mayor?
I would vote for Woody Rice, not because he's an alternate, which of course is helpful. Ms. Rice knows a lot about stormwater, and I think he would be very helpful on PNZ and on TEC, so I would like to have him on both.
Okay. I see no more counsel?
Still want it.
Are there any cards on this?
Yes, sir. We have one card. Stan Johnston?
Normally, what you do is you ask for... This is Stan Johnston. You ask for people to... I'm one of the people that are being considered, so I don't think that the three minutes should be relevant to this... Should I be limited to the three minutes, like, because they've never done it before? In other words, I'm a candidate, I'm going to talk about myself and talk about the situation. So I'm asking for this, not to do the three minutes. I don't think you should because you hadn't done it before. It's maybe because of me. do here. Pull us together to make a difference. And I appreciate that, and I hope this says that to you. So with that, I guess we take a picture or two. I will just put that right there. Is that good?
And Mayor and Council, we are now on Agenda Item 5B, Letters of Appreciation that I'd like to read for the record. From Community Development, Lori Darji, Mr. Eddie Galindo, Chris Enright, Brad Parish, and Gabriel Quintez. From Neighborhood Services, Ms. Tracy Davis, Terry Franklin, Rose Conig, Gerarda Loeb, and Justin Pouncy. And from our Legal Department, Chelsea Farrell.
Thank you very much. And I hope that we hear those names. Sometimes it doesn't seem enough just to read the name, but your names and your effort mean a lot to us, and I appreciate that. And thank you for taking the time in this organization to throw those names up there every month. Okay, City Manager, we move on.
Onto Boards and Commission, Item 6A, the Planning and Zoning Commission Semi-Annual Report, as presented, it is in your packet along with the emails that we had received for this meeting. It's in your yellow folder. And no action is required.
No action required. We move on to 6B.
Planning and Zoning Commission, accept the resignation of Member Mary Murray with a term to expire on 31 January 31, 2020. Ms. Murray's resignation was effective February 5, 2021. Currently, there is one vacancy for a regular member with an expired term to expire on January 31, 2022. There are five applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Danny Aton, Mr. Christopher Childs, Mr. Robert Johnston, Mr. Linwood, Woody Rice, alternate member, have all expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member, with an unexpired term to expire on January 31, 2022. Alternate member Kathleen Riley does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time.
At this time, we need to accept Mary Murray's resignation, correct?
Yes.
Any comment or motion on that?
I'd move to...
Go ahead.
Did I do it? I'd move to accept the resignation of regular member Mary Murray.
Second.
And I have a second. Hold that vote. Do I need to call cards on this? On the second part, okay. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. We now must move to the appointment of a regular member to the PNZ Board. Counsel, do we have discussion? Member Robinson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe in longevity and service. I suggest, recommend that if one of the alternates showed interested, interest in moving forward, I think that they should be given the opportunity to do that.
Member Jordan.
Yeah, I think we only have one alternate, right? The other alternate wasn't interested.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Robinson, which means that would be Mr. Woody Rice should move from alternate to permanent member.
City Attorney.
Yeah, correct. At this point, we'll need cards on this side.
I'm not done yet here. Vice Mayor.
I would vote for Woody Rice, not because he's an alternate, which of course is helpful. Ms. Rice knows a lot about stormwater, and I think he would be very helpful on PNZ and on TEC. So I would like to have him on both.
Okay. I see no more counsel.
Still want it.
Are there any cards on this?
Yes, sir. We have one card. Stan Johnston.
to, who, I'm one of the people that are being considered. So I don't think that the three minutes should be relevant to this, should I be limited to the three minutes, like, because they've never done it before? In other words, I'm a candidate, I'm going to talk about myself and talk about the situation. So I'm asking for this, not to do the three minutes. I don't think you should, because you hadn't done it before. It's maybe it's because of me.
Yes, sir. Typically, when you're appointed a board, you ask if any of those who have applications want to speak, and you call them up. Yeah, I don't know whether or not in the past you've run the three minutes in each of them. I know that they've typically not taken more than that. You can certainly ask Mr. Johnston if he wants to speak as an applicant. And then, if it runs long, you certainly decide to run the clock. But I'd let him speak as to as far as being an applicant at this time.
Okay. And I would say the reason the clock started to begin with was you put a card in, and we were running it as a card. So, go.
Okay. I'm an applicant, and I'm also a registered engineer. And we know that there's a number of problems. What I did, I gave you a handout. A handout is the calculation sheet. And it shows a number of problems with the city. And it has to do with planning and zoning especially. And the section I'm especially want you to pay attention is the violation of laws. This violation of laws, this is from 1984. It's a calculation sheet that says that the, that the Weir Dam designed at Carroll Avenue, and Mr. Diesel, you know very much about that.
Very familiar.
It designed at the height stage of 15 feet to flood 27 acres. 27 acres, that means it's flooding, literally people's property, Stan, my wife and I's property, by at least 20 acres. So this is, this is certainly a violation of drainage law, city's ordinance to not obstruct, obstruct ditches, stormwater master plan, Article 14 of the U.S. Constitution, it's taking a property out of the process of law by submerging land or increasing wetland area. And it's violation of FEMA regulations. And in this case, it's erroneous flood zone. And by the way, I need to say to you, Mr. Diesel, is this is not one of a kind Baker subdivision. It's one of many. In fact, it's Mr. Jordan's subdivision is in the same situation, where it's no compensatory storage and so forth in that particular situation. So I'm bringing this to your attention because you still haven't addressed it. And it's an issue for Planning and Zoning to take care of. So I'm saying that I, who am familiar with this situation, and am knowledgeable of numerous laws violated by the City of Titusville, I think that I should be considered for this, for this position, because the city is going backwards. When you continue to violate laws, and I've been saying for, what, over six years, and they don't do it, the city is going backwards. It's spending millions and millions of dollars, wasting it, wasting time, comp plan and so forth, erroneous flood zones, nine square miles of watershed, erroneous flood zones. I'll sign it and seal it. You cannot get any professional engineer, competent professional engineer to disagree with me. So the city is in big trouble. And I'm, I want to be there to, to help correct this. And I would like your cooperation and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other applicant here to speak? Any other applicant? I see none. Say again?
I'm here, but I don't need to speak.
Well, you can if you want, if you have anything you want to say. Okay. Let me ask you this then, Counsel. Is there any questions of the applicants that you see here? Okay, with, okay, no.
No.
Okay. With that said, I believe we, have we had the motion on Woody?
Nope.
Okay. Then I will take a motion on who we'd like to move.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Mr. Linwood Rice as the permanent member of the Planning and Zoning.
I have a motion for Mr. Rice. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rice will move to the PNZ Board. Do we want to talk about TEC?
Before we do that, sir, you've now opened up an alternate position with the PNZ. So you have the opportunity to fill that position with the current applicant, pull this before you.
Okay. I can't make a motion. So let me just say that I, I see Mr. Childs out there, and I think that he would be a valuable member of the Board, any Board actually. And I would like to see him get involved and stay involved. And I think this is how we spread our wings a little bit and get more people involved. So I would throw that out there and go to Member Jordan.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I kind of agree with you, but I also know that Mr. Dan Aton has been serving on Boards for many years, and I think he'd be real capable of being an alternate. He is a business person, a successful business person in the city, and that's who I'd like to see on the Board. As, I guess this is an alternate, yes.
Yeah, it's an alternate position. Let me just question with that. Mr. Aton, are you on a Board now?
I am on the Northern Department of Environmental Development.
That one I know about, yeah. And I get to observe you at the Friday morning meetings, and you're, I've said it to that whole group, you guys are icons. And I appreciate that. I think there's no question, you would do an excellent job. I also am looking for a way that we can bring in new people that aren't on a Board. And so I think there's merit in both. Member Jordan, are you still up, or you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Vice Mayor Nelson.
I tend to agree with you guys. I think both of you bring something to the table, and it's valuable. I think either of you could do an excellent job. So I have to say I got to this part of my reading, which fortunately was only 300 pages this week. And I sort of went, you know, I see both of you being able to do it, and both of you having some really great skills. So.
Robinson.
Yeah, I'm going to deviate, and I've been known to do that from time to time. I think we, that we'll benefit by bringing new ideas and new blood to the table and give some individual experience on that. So I'm going to, because of that, and being a new kid on the block, and I would like to see consideration for Mr. Childs.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Member Robinson. City Attorney, is this a place where we could, instead of being a roll call vote, we could say who we would vote for?
Typically, what you could do is open nominations. Each member can make a nomination. And then you, then you'd call for the vote and say who you vote for, and the one with the most votes would be nominated.
By nomination, would that be a normal nomination in a second, or would that be a nomination where we all say somebody?
Just a nomination. You don't need a second. You could say, I open nominations, and each member can nominate a person. And then...
Okay, let's go that direction. I think this is going to be a little, a little different than the normal, yes or no.
Or you can just call for a vote and just go down their list and ask them to name the person.
I would rather do that.
Sorry, you'd like to do it. It's not a formal rule, sir.
I would rather do that if the Counsel is okay with that.
Whatever you want to do, sir.
All right, I'm going to propose that we get a roll call vote, and instead of saying yes, you say who you would like to have out of these two fine.
Fine, young man.
Fine representatives. So Clerk, would you do that for us, please?
Yes, sir. Member Stokel.
Dan Aton.
Member Robinson.
Christopher Childs.
Member Jordan.
Aton.
Mayor Diesel.
Chris Childs.
And Vice Mayor Nelson.
Chris Childs.
And Chris Childs will be the alternate in a 3-2 vote. Mr. Aton, I certainly hope you understand that I think you do an outstanding job. But there, I get to see it. We're on that same Board, and I appreciate that. Actually, I shouldn't say it that way. That's incorrect. I'm the liaison for Titusville to that Board. Don't make it the wrong idea.
Woo.
Not allowed to be on that Board. But Chris, thank you for being here. Thank you for your enthusiasm. And I hope to see you on Boards and involved in Titusville for a long time. All right, I appreciate that. So that's a 3-2 vote, and we move forward.
Onto Six, Item 6C, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission. Appoint one regular member to the Titusville Environmental Commission with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2021. Currently, there are two applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Christopher Childs, resident, and Mr. Linwood Rice, resident. Both have expressed their willingness to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission as regular members with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2021. Alternate member Laura Lee Thompson, non-resident, has also expressed her willingness to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission as a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2021. In addition, both Mr. Childs and Mr. Rice have expressed their desire to serve in the dual role member to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Titusville Environmental Commission. Land Development Regulations, Section 31, 122A, states that at least one of the members of the Titusville Environmental Commission may also be a member of the Titusville Planning and Zoning Commission. However, the Environmental Commission member must be a resident of the City of Titusville. Mr. Rice and Mr. Child are both residents.
We have, anything you guys want to say about that, applicants? Come on, take a step up there anyway. I said a lot about you. You got to say something.
Well, thank you for one, for giving me an opportunity to serve as an alternative on the other Board. And I'm agreeable to serve on whatever you want me to. I don't have a lot of experience in environment or anything, but I do care about it. And I live here, and I love, I think, you know, I've spoken, when I was running for office, I spoke to a lot of, you know, business owners and individuals, and I know how important this obviously, you know, our environment is to business too. So, and our health. So it's something important, and I'd be honored to serve on anything that you would allow me to serve on. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Counsel? Okay. Mr. Rice. And before we go there, can an alternate serve in that role, dual role? Because as you know, so ahead, go ahead. So it doesn't matter that he would, that Chris is an alternate, and he could do
It's silent on that point.
What you're saying is guess.
I think Counsel could use their discretion.
We're fine. Go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Good evening, y'all. I serve at your all's pleasure, wherever you think I'm a good fit, I'm willing to serve. I think you brought it up at the last meeting and asked me if I would, and talked to my wife, and most definitely, I think it's something that we can do. And one thing I did fail to mention in my background was that I worked five years in an environmental firm, going wetland, Gulf Torrid surveys, and wetland lines, and stuff like that. So I have a little bit of an environmental background. That was early in my career. And then, of course, with my occupation, I permit a lot of stuff through St. John's, and Army Corps of Engineers, and stuff like that. But, you know, I see the need, I see the continuity between TEC and PNZ, that you really do need that. So I just serve at your pleasure. Either way is fine with me.
Thank you so much. Counsel, at this point, I would, well, let me do this. Do I have any cards on the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so used to seeing you back there showing me cards and...
I didn't bring any pictures for show until tonight. Saving for tomorrow.
No.
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue. So I can't, you know, I'm not a resident of Titusville, even though I've lived here all my life. So I want to withdraw my name from the, from the roster. But I think, I think Woody would be the best choice, you know, because I've served with Woody on the TEC, and his knowledge of stormwater and all the environmental issues. Chris, I think you'd do a great job. I really do. But we desperately need somebody that, that has the knowledge already, that can work on both Boards, and I think Woody would be the best choice. And so I appreciate y'all considering Woody. And Chris, welcome to the PNZ. And Dan, thank you. You did such a wonderful job for the community. But I agree, I think we need some new blood. And I can make enough noise as an alternate. Thank you.
Laura Lee, thank you. You continue to amaze me. With that said, now, now, do I have any cards from the public?
Yes, sir. We have one card. Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer, 860 Point Set Avenue. I don't have good news for you. We know about Flint, Michigan, where they had the lead contamination into the potable water system, because they changed the source of the water and did not make appropriate adjustments. I want to share with you is that what happened to Flint, Michigan, is unacceptable engineering, and more cover-ups for, but what happened in Flint, Michigan, is, is nothing compared to what is happening for the last 35 years in the City of Titusville. And let me show you this. Again, you've seen this many times, is that this is violation of FEMA regulations, violations of the stormwater management plan, violation of so many, so many laws and regulations. It's unbelievable. And this is what the City of Titusville is promoting for the last 35 years. You're in trouble. And this has to do with this Titusville Environmental Commission. It has to do with you breaking laws again and again and again. For 35 years, there's no question about it. Not a doubt, not a doubt at all. And you continue doing it. And this looks, this look what you just recently did with the sewage, the sewage, my goodness. We have videos, we have photos, we have all kinds of witnesses. And the City of Titusville, I'm talking about the Counsel. I mean, I even, contacted you guys saying, hey, please come. And you can see it happening. And now what are we doing? We're having another sewage spill right now. March, February 18, just a few days ago, and even February 21. What we did is the rain came, and it started, the water in West Pond rose, and it's going right to Space View Park. And that's where it's going. And then it goes right to the river. We're doing it right now. We're doing the same thing again, right now. And you don't care. I've sent you notices. I've warned Water Resources. Nothing happens. And you're continuing to do it. I contacted FDOT and FDEP. Maybe they'll do something. But you guys are sitting on your duffs or whatever, space cadets, whatever, and you're not doing a thing. It's stupid. I can't believe it. And right now, I go to Space View Park, and I get sprayed by sewage, because you got the fountain on. Toxic waste there. Spraying the, spraying the people, having the fountains on. So that's what's going on. TEC needs to, needs to straighten you guys out. And I don't understand why in the world you're doing this. But it makes no sense whatsoever what you're doing. And you're a problem. 35 years of this. And I'm talking about Baker Subdivision to begin with, and the same, the calculation sheet that I gave dated 1984.
Time's up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion for a TEC position? I see Vice Mayor Nelson.
I would move to appoint Woody Rice as the TEC member. I think he would be very helpful. I agree with Laura Lee. Mr. Rice actually helped, or designed a low-impact development. So he is aware of that, and that's one of the things that they're looking at, along with stormwater. So I think he would be very helpful to that.
Thank you very much. A second. Member Jordan, second. I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you, Mr. Childs. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Laura Lee. You amaze me every day. Okay, we move on to petitions and requests from the public. Is there anybody there who would like, come on.
Hi.
Good morning.
Do I need to push the button? You can hear me?
As long as your red light's on, you're good.
Okay. My name is Kay St. Ong, and I live on Maryland Avenue in Titusville. I'm here tonight to speak with you about the sewage spill. Not to complain or point the finger of blame, I recognize the hard work of the Water Resources employees. But tonight, I wish to emphasize just how much I and other citizens feel an obligation to remedy, to rectify, the impact the sewage spill has had on Sandpoint Park and the lagoon. But if we were to work together, Dan Diesel's favorite word, citizens, elected representatives, and nonprofit... and nonprofit agencies, we can show Brevard County that Titusville wishes to remediate this spill. Let's roll up our sleeves and work together in this effort. Let's make positive news about remediation. How about if at a ceremony, the mayor were to make an announcement that cypress trees will be planted along Sandpoint Park's East Pond? Citizens are willing to donate for the trees if the city or county will plant them. Cypress trees will remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the pond so the nutrients don't discharge into the lagoon. The mayor could also announce that the city will be working with Marine Resource Council and/or the Brevard Zoo to plant mangroves among the rocks of the lagoon shoreline at Sandpoint Park. Mangroves would absorb nutrients, stabilize shoreline, provide habitat, and beautify the park. Both the MRC and the zoo have indicated a desire to discuss the planting of mangroves with the city. KBB volunteers are standing by to plant mangroves under the supervision of MRC or the zoo. This is a win-win situation for the city and a great public relations strategy. Sandpoint Park is a gateway to Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge, the Space Center, and the Canaveral National Seashore. We have millions of visitors every year from all over the world stop at this park. Planting cypress trees and mangroves would improve tourism and beautify the park. Other measures the city could undertake to remediate for the spill would be dredging of the ponds, baffle boxes, bee mats, or littoral plantings. Kevin Cook of the Stormwater Division has indicated baffle boxes could be installed at the park and together with bee mats would be very effective at removing nutrients. The citizens are willing to do their part. We are willing to donate to purchase cypress trees. We are willing to do the hard work of planting mangroves along the rocky lagoon shoreline. Is the city willing to dredge the ponds and provide baffle boxes and bee mats? One more sentence.
Thank you.
Let's all do our part to keep our economy healthy by working to make the lagoon healthy. Thank you, any questions?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I like the idea. I like the idea of our mayor standing up on Arbor Day and saying, hey, we're going to do something. So I guess I saw Kevin somewhere, hiding behind a mask. I went to the TEC meeting last week, I think it was, and it was very interesting. Kevin and Sandy did a presentation, or it was more of a question and answer session with TEC members. Laura Lee was there. And some of the discussion which is, was what is better for cleaning up the environment? And they were going to go get some figures and come back to the TEC and talk to them. I think it'd be very interesting for us to hear it also. One of the things that they talked about was that stormwater ponds do not get rid of as much nutrient, of the nutrients as the bee maps and the baffle boxes. So they were saying, I hope I'm quoting them right, if I'm not, you need to stand up. But it was a very interesting presentation, and he was talking about some of the things that we could do to clean up Sandpoint Park and just clean up the river. So I don't know if this is something that's possible, but it sounds like we have people that are willing to plant the mangroves, provide the mangroves, plant and provide the cypress trees. You know, obviously, we don't want to get in the way of public works, but if we can work this out, this could be, as Kay said, a win-win.
And I feel the same way. And I probably, I'm getting ready to say, Kevin and city manager, maybe you can give me an idea what we can and can't do, and it sounds like there's some possible donations. I understand there's a possibility of us meeting before too long. I know your main topic, but I'd like you to bring that topic so I can understand it better, the trees, you know, the donation of trees away. Because even though I would say, let's go do it and start digging tomorrow, it always seems like there's somebody says, oh, you can't do that. So I need to find out about those things. But I would like you to, when we sit down in the near future, a lot of that is what we want to talk about, especially I want to hear more about the trees.
Cypress trees.
Yeah, yeah, whichever trees you want, because I'm not sure I'd get the right one.
The cypress trees can be planted along the ponds, the edges of the ponds, and they absorb the nutrients, the pollution, the nitrogen and the phosphorus in the waters, and that's why cypress trees are a good choice.
I'd like to learn about that. Didn't you say something else about some trees along the lagoon or?
Littoral plantings, which are reeds, and Laura Lee knows more about littoral plantings than I do, but they also absorb nutrients from ponds, and so that's a good idea as well.
I look forward to hearing more.
Okay, thank you very much.
Member Jordan, did you have a question or?
Oh, yeah, I just want us to be very cautious. I don't think there's anyone up here who don't want clean air, clean water, and all of that. But of course, I think on the business side, the liability issues, I'm not sure how that actually works as far as having the public actually planting along water lines and all this stuff, someone get hurt, whereas insurance, it's that liability on the city and all that good stuff. So I think we just need to make sure we work all that stuff.
If we did that, I think that we could bring it under a KBB type thing and they could, you know, kind of get it away from our umbrella. But I mean, that's down the road. And then there's some situations with Sandpoint Park, which is always confusing, city-owned, county-maintained.
Right.
What is it we can and can't do?
Right.
So those are the questions we got to answer before we go forward. You good? All right, next up, in?
Herman Cole, 776 Florentia Circle, Titusville, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. When Mayor Diesel asked me to chair the Community Services Award, I was honored to do it because within the last year, we have gone through coronavirus and people have helped people in numerous ways. So we held our first meeting for the Community Service Award. This award is in memory of Reverend Harry R. Lee, who was a city chaplain, and he did a lot of things within our community. The person that is chosen, the award will be given on Flag Day, which is June 14th. We're in the process of sending out 200 letters to nonprofit organizations so they can give us names of their nominees. And from their nominees, we will call it down to maybe five award recipients, and they will not know who they are, and they'll come to the Flag Day ceremony on the 14th of July. But I think it's a great thing to do because there are so many people who have given so much of themselves to help others during this time. So appreciate it. This is just to, an acknowledgement of this Community Service Award that we're doing, and if you as a nonprofit, you do not receive a letter within the next two weeks, please contact the city and Ms. Caitlin Rodriguez because she will, she has the forms and stuff so you can make these submittals. So like I said, it's over 200 nonprofit organizations within the city that we're sending out these letters to, including like Rotary and Kiwanis and all these clubs to make these nominations. But I appreciate the opportunity that you gave me to.
I appreciate you accepting, you're that guy.
I'm that guy.
And I will continue to call you a young man.
I appreciate it, although Mr. Jordan doesn't like it. And if you can bear my indulgence just for a minute, I really appreciate this proclamation that you did because when we formed the Humanitarian Task Force in September, we felt a real need for this in our community. And we are still going forward with it with 18 members, and it's continuing to grow as it goes on. And our plan is to hold seminars within the community and have people come and us have discussions. And the discussions would be more along the line of awareness and education, not trying to make anybody angry, that may happen, but that's not the intent of it. The intent is to try to bring people together with an understanding of each other. But this proclamation really helps, and I really sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate you, I appreciate the rest of Member Jordan and the entire group, I appreciate that. I think you're up. Petitions and requests, anybody else?
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. Not to belabor what Kay pointed out, I agree with everything that she said, and I can clarify some things, maybe, yes, KBB could be the person, you know, to work with the city and the zoo, they have contracts, they have insurance, they have workers. One thing that they will need is an auger. I think last year, some of the TEC members planted those cypress trees that are at the east end of the East Pond at Sandpoint Park now, and it about killed them, you know, and we're old, we shouldn't be doing that kind of stuff. So surely the city has some kind of an auger that you can dig the holes with, and that would be necessary. I want to clarify, I made a mistake when I did my little picture show last, at the last meeting, and I said that there was two centimeters of visibility in the river, but I've been informed that two centimeters is less than one inch. It was actually two decimeters, which is less than eight inches, and we're still at that level. So down in Melbourne, they have like 80 inches of visibility in the lagoon. Up at Oak Hill, they got 60, 60 to 80 inches of visibility. This murky water seems to be centered around Titusville in the northern end of the lagoon, and all you got to do is look out your window. Our water is still brown. It's still, you can't, you stand in eight inches of water and you can't see your toes. So it's, you know, we, everybody wants to help, like people from South Brevard want to come up here and help, so let them come up here and help us. I think that's it. I don't need to belabor everything else. If you have questions, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
I do know where to find you. But I do have a question. I understand that they're coming up here to demuck?
No, I don't know anything about that.
Okay.
I would like that.
I would too.
But, you know, now the ponds are full of water again, so.
Now, let's talk about the river.
It's gotten a lot, huh?
Let's talk about the river.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, we are slated for a dredging project, I think next year, I can check, you know, it would be in the Save Our Lagoon Plan, but yes, we are slated, I think, in front of your condo. Yeah, so that area there, so it is, it is, they torpedoed quite a few of the dredging projects and switched the money over to Septic to Sewer, but ours survived, so that's good news.
So if you hear when?
Hmm?
If you hear when, will you let us know?
I will find out and let you know, yeah. I think it's next year. I know they're doing the NASA Causeway, the west side of the NASA Causeway, I think, next year. So they may do both projects while they're in the same area. One other thing, baffle boxes, you know, we've talked a lot about baffle boxes, they're incredibly expensive, Mr. Stoffer will back that up. So the city would need to apply early, every fall, there is some extra money available in the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Fund, and the city's been pretty good at tracking that and, but there's a lot of applications come in, you know, from all the municipalities in the county trying to get their projects into the pipeline, but that's the time, that's the time. I mean, Titusville's done a really good job, you know, on the baffle boxes, we're doing really, really good. But those ponds at Sandpoint Park are, there's nothing, you know, they're like a straight conduit for stormwater straight into the lagoon. And so anything we can do, bee mats, planting the right kind of plants around the shoreline and then not killing them with herbicides, there's some beautiful shoreline plants that we can plant instead of letting cattails grow. So there's things that we can do, and we can do it with volunteers, and that won't be as costly as baffle box.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a question for.
Hold up, Laura Lee.
You're not done yet, right here.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand, I was just sitting here thinking, as an engineer, we always have to have a plan, you know? And I was listening to Ms. St. Ange, and we're talking about doing different things, but, and please, I am not trying to disrespect you or anything, I'm trying to understand, where's the structure? You're talking about planting trees, talking about planting some, is there some big plant somewhere that we can look at? I mean, you can have people come up and say, okay, plant stuff here. Is that an acceptable way of planting? Don't, shouldn't you have some kind of design for where you're going to put the plants along the shoreline or around the pond?
We can come up with that if that's what you'd want, yes, absolutely. We'll see if Ms. Burson can donate some of her time in coming up with a plan of what needs to be planted where. We can certainly do that, Mr. Jordan.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know where to put a baffle box. I have an opinion.
Right, right.
In the ditch between the East Pond and where it goes into the river, that would be my preferred location for a baffle box.
Right.
But we can certainly come up with a landscape plan for where we want to plant which and what vegetation. That's simple.
To me, yeah, that just seems to me.
You want to see a plan?
Well, that just seems to be the right step before you start.
I agree with you. Right now, everybody, they're saying, we want to help, we want to help, and we know that certain things will help, and the next step would be to create a plan, absolutely. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Any more questions before I go? Thank you, thank you.
All right, hold on, Member Stokel's there.
Actually, yes, along the same lines as Member Jordan, I think what would be helpful for me too is maybe an order of priority, so especially as we're entering into the next budget cycle and staff gives us information on what's important. If you guys have items or estimated cost, or should it go from the Save Our Lagoon Fund, that would, I think, be helpful for us, because I know I'm not a scientist by any means, but that, just hearing that, and again, to Ms. St. Ange and the trees, estimated expense, she said those could potentially be donated, but then our staff would be doing that, just some of those things I think would help us to kind of focus more in on what we can do to help with everything going on.
Okay, well, I don't want to step on staff's toes, I mean, as far as baffle boxes and bee mats and things like that, I don't know how much they cost, I can certainly try to find out.
And we are doing, and we are doing those, as you know, and I know our target area has been along the Indian River Lagoon. Again, they cost money, we're trying.
Right, they're not, they're not, bee mats are a lot cheaper than baffle boxes, but nothing's cheap, we can tell you that. But I would think that, given our unique circumstance with the impact that we've had on the lagoon, that maybe like DEP or St. John's River Water Management, there may be other sources where we can look for grant money besides just the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Fund, because the sorrel funds are, they're tied up. I mean, you get a little bit, a teeny little bit of money that becomes available every fall that everybody fights over, but there's other grant opportunities and actually, Bill Klein is pretty good at running those down, so if we can sick him on that, we can, there are other opportunities. And I would think that, I think if we scream loud enough, I mean, as Ms. St. Ange said, Ten Point Park is the gateway to three national treasures, you know, the only space center that's open to the public in the world, one of only 10 national seashores, and the third most visited national wildlife refuge in the country. You would think that the state of Florida would, you know, as far as for tourism, would want to help us clean up the mess and improve the situation. And I think what you did for the city workers tonight was absolutely spectacular. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, as always.
Can I ask one more question?
No, no. Vice Mayor, wait, don't leave.
Come back, come back.
You like a?
Remember when you got the grant dollars for the refuge, for the exhibits?
That was through the Tourist Development Council Capital Facilities Fund, which can only be used for tourism-type projects, sticks and stones. The TDC did have a million dollars a year dedicated towards Indian River Lagoon projects. It came out of the Beach Committee Fund. Unfortunately, after COVID struck and the bed tax collections went very far south, the first thing that they eliminated was the Indian River Lagoon Million Dollar Fund because they had to. because they had to protect the beach renourishment funds. So.
That's not what I'm thinking. I'm trying to, I'm hoping you can read my mind.
Well, I, do I look like Houdini?
We were talking at some point about if we did an exhibit in a park, that this money would cover it.
That, I was referring to the beach, the Indian River Lagoon.
And we're leaving us half that out later.
Sir?
We're leaving us half that out later.
We can have lunch, okay?
Work on reading your mind from back there, and if you get it, pop back up. Next up on the petitions and requests.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point City Avenue. And I brought my board with me because I'm knocking at your door. Because when I knock on the door of Mr. Stauffer, he never answers. February the 18th, I left him a message with, with the city hall saying, hey, listen, your sewage is going to Space View Park. I see it. I've got witnesses. I've got two police officers even. Me, other people, city employees, it's going to Space View Park. So Space View Park has now got toxic stuff in it, and what are you doing? You're doing the same thing you did before. This is the sign that I had at Sandpoint Park. And now we're doing it at Space View Park. And just as Mrs. Laurlee was talking about, this is the Space, this is the Space View Center with like three national treasures, and what do we do? We spray the public with sewage. Now, how can this be good? I mean, we got, we know it's toxic. We've got, we've got signs around, around the west pond that says it's unsafe. We're pumping it into, into tankers, we're taking to the water treatment plant, and we're also pouring it in to Space View Park, storing it there, and then it goes to the river. Not only do we store it there, what we do is put it in fountains, we spray it up, and with this wind, it sprays. I saw the concrete was wet. I got witnesses. I got city employees, witnesses, that people are getting sprayed with sewage. And what do you do? You're space cadets. You're doing absolutely nothing. None of you are doing nothing. City manager, Mr. Stauffer, none of you employee, none of you staff are doing it. I send you, I send you emails, and you do absolutely what? You're space cadets, tripping through the tulips, tiptoe through the tulips. Are you afraid to say something? You talk all this, we just saw, people on television watching you guys, you talk about all this other stuff, but why don't you act now on something? Are you idiots? Are you afraid? That's all I hear from you guys. Chickens. It's terrible. Now, I'm asking you to do something about it. Shut the fountains off. Do something about the sewage. Be truthful. You're not being truthful at all. January the 12th, here's what happened. It says burning eyes, burning ears, burning throat, brain, headache, diarrhea, vomiting. I even talked to some of these people that had that. And who's responsible for that? You guys, you guys. City manager, city attorney, and all you guys up there, including you, Joe, you're responsible for this. Now, what in the world are you doing? Absolutely what? Nothing. Space cadets. What planet? Is it planet Pluto? I think it's Uranus. Space cadets from Uranus. What is, I don't understand it. I'm registered.
Your time is up, sir. Appreciate it.
May I have five more minutes, please?
I see none. Thank you. Come on up. Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record in three minutes.
My name is Arlen Briggs. I reside at 24969 Southwest 130 Road in Kincaid, Kansas. I came here tonight to speak about what I saw happening in Titusville, because I want to develop here. But my mind has changed. I've been here seven weeks, scoping things out. I don't like what I'm hearing. I won't move here. I won't bring industry here. I grew up and I worked in Olahtha, Kansas, and we went through the very same process there. We had what was called the Golden Rule in Kansas, and big developers came in, they shoved it through and rammed it down people's throat. They tried to. Because I was part of a homeowners association that had backbone. We took on the developers, and they threatened to use the Golden Rule against us because they said, if you don't allow us to build, we're gonna sue you. I'm just a farm boy. I have a brother who lives in St. Augustine. I have a nephew who lives in Winter Haven and has a business there. You've all seen the movie probably, Karen Brockovich. She grew up in Lawrence, Kansas, home of the KU Jayhawks. We know basketball about as well as Kentucky, almost as good as Gainesville, which hired our coach, Lon Kruger. What I'm saying is, don't be beat by people. Listen to your current residents. They spent lifetimes here. You owe it to them, not money. Don't sell yourself out for dollars. Look at what's happening up and down the coast of Florida. Development, same batch of stores. Next, next, next. It's all up and down the coast. And what do you got after you have it? Dead commercial property. We had it in Olahtha. You got a core. You got it every major city because people's always wanting to get away from other people. We call it the Donut Effect. And then you go back in and you try and redevelop it. Take a look at the railroad tracks. It's a dividing line. I don't like it. You've got people on this side who I call the haves. Then you go across and you got the have-nots.
Your time is up. Can you summarize in 30 seconds? Your three minutes is up.
I drove 1,200 miles to come here.
And we've got you for three minutes.
And I know, but you are also making a major decision tonight, because what you are doing is setting the course for future development. You're making a mistake. Just because it's always been done that way does not mean it should be continued that way. Look at your people. Look at the people and what's happening on the west side.
Your time is up. I appreciate it. We do look at the people. We do listen to people. I ask you if you could finish in 30 seconds or a minute.
Yes, I can.
All right, can we give him 30 seconds, minute? What do you want to give him?
If you'll motion me when I'm at half of that, I'd appreciate it.
What, we say in a minute? All right, one more minute. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. What I'm saying is, look at what's happening as you go up toward MEMS. People up there are building a moat around property to try and keep stuff out. You've got a beautiful jewel in Florida. You got people coming from everywhere, but they're gonna destroy it. Don't let it happen. We got the same thing in Kansas, in the Flint Hills. And they came out, and we have thousands of cattle run there. And people said, oh, we can't have barbed wire. We want to have a trail. We want to do this. That's the livelihood. Look at having cooperation between the people who want to develop and what the people of residents. We now require them to have meetings to reach compromise. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Anything else on petitions and requests? City manager, we move forward to?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we are on consent agenda. Council members, any of you want to pull any of Consent Agenda Items A through H? City Clerk, are there cards for Consent Agenda Items A through H?
We have one card for six items.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read Consent Agenda Item for the records.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Consent Agenda Item 8A, accept a utility easement from Highway 50 in Titusville LLC to Titusville Point Master Plan Project, subject to final review by the city attorney. Consent Agenda Item 8B, approve the purchase of nine SWAT body armor from ELI, Federal East International, that will be expiring this year. Also approve ELI State as a vendor of record for over $15,000 to purchase the body armor. Consent Agenda Item 8C, approve the FY21 Home Distribution Agreement with Bivard County, and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the same, and approve the associated budget amendment. Consent Agenda Item 8D, approve the purchase of Rexel USA Incorporated 585 Distribution Drive Number Three, Melbourne, Florida, in the amount of $78,750 for the purchase of 50 each, esteemed Horizon 900 radio telemetry upgrades of lift stations and water wells citywide, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract or approve the issuance of a purchase order. This is the first year of a two-year replacement plan. Consent Agenda Item 8E, authorize the mayor to execute Amendment 1 to Save the Indian River Lagoon Cost Sharing Funding Interlocal Agreement, Save Our Indian River Lagoon 19-97. Consent Agenda Item 8F, approve the civil forfeiture seizure legal services with Jason M. Gordon, Attorney at Law, and provide legal representation for the City of Titusville Police Department, and authorize the execution of the contract. Consent Agenda Item 8G, accept utility easement from Wave Development LLC for Beach Wave Project located at 101 AMAX Brewer Causeway, subject to final review by the city attorney. Consent Agenda Item 8H, approve the purchase of 20 Axon Body Cameras, along with data licenses for new cameras and pre-existing cameras in the inventory, in the amount of $25,270.41 from Axon Enterprises Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase order.
Thank you much, Mr. City Manager. Is there anything that the council wishes to comment on first? Member Stokoe?
Yes. I just had a question about the radios. Will these, like, with our recent sewer spill that we had, would these potentially help that in the future? Is that what these are?
These are associated with the lift stations and the wells. So there is a lift station in that vicinity, but it was reporting fine.
Okay.
These are just, these are replacement radios over two years for all of those.
So it is a proactive measure that we're taking to try to better monitor to potentially avoid spills in the future? Is that correct?
No, ma'am. These are associated with lift stations. So when the lift station is not pumping properly, it notifies us. If a lift station is backed up, it notifies us. It's done through telemetry, through radio system, and it's monitored at our station, at our wastewater treatment facility.
Okay. So if we didn't have them, or we had old ones, it could potentially be an issue?
Yes, these are old ones that are being replaced over two years. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Call the cards on the consent agenda.
We only have one card, which is Stan Johnson.
Do we have the consent agenda items he wants to talk about?
Yes, sir. Item B, D, E, F, G, and H.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point City Avenue. I guess when I talk about something controversial, that's certainly not something you're gonna bring up, you're not gonna talk about it. But if you talk about something about like trees planting and stuff like that, you'll spend a lot of time on that. I think the public is fed up with what's going on. And I'm talking about these consent agenda items because what in the world are we doing? What in the world? Let's take a look at some of these. This 8D, for example, and nine, and is it eight? Yeah, 8D, 8E. And there's some money spent here, and 8H, too. Now, when we're looking at spending of money, like, here's $78,000. We're spending, I mean, we're making, you're making decisions tonight about spending, you know, here's $78,000, $100,000 or something like that. But you know what? Right now, right now, right now. I had two police officers, they watched this sewage, the hot sewage going to the Indian River. And by golly, why don't we spend some money on that right now? Right now? You know, and when the wind blows, I get sprayed, or somebody gets sprayed with sewage. Why don't you do something about that? I mean, why in the world are we talking about these things when we can't, when we can, we can really get into things that are happening right now? Real time. But we don't. We don't. Fact is, we ignore things that Stan Johnson says. And just like, for example, we're talking about this 8F, I put neutral on that, approval of civil forfeiture seizure legal services, we got another attorney involved. But you know what? You know what? We got an attorney. Is it, I just gave you this right here. And I've talked about it for years and years and years. The City of Titusville is violating all these laws, and it appears to me is our city attorney, that we pay over $160,000 a year, he seems to be encouraging us to violate laws. As far, it's, he's not advising us that we've, that we've violated laws, which I'm doing. It seems like to me, he's pretty worthless. But we pay him $160,000, and we paid this other guy, we paid him over $160,000 a year, too. It seems like we're paying for dishonesty. We're paying for malfeasance of office. So anyhow, so now we're gonna pay on 8G, we're gonna pay for another, no, 8F, sorry. We're gonna pay for another attorney to do something else. Well, why don't we get an attorney to look at these things? Or get a professional engineer? You know what I've seen? I've seen is that what's going on in the City of Titusville is that you've got planners, you've got administrators, you've got city council members, but you're not gonna use a professional engineer. In other words, we're talking about issues of health, safety, and welfare, but we will not, we will not, the City of Titusville will not pay. In other words, they're paying $78,000 for this, they're paying like over $100,000 for these issues. But we will not pay for a professional engineer to give us opinions on this. We will not do it. We won't do it. Because it'll show us how guilty we are, how we're just, and right now, for example, me, I'm treated like dirt here, just like dirt. You know it, I know it. And that's, that's why I gave you this thing over here, this, this sheet right here that says, it says, you know, it says, oh, right here, this one. Whoop, this one, front and back. It says, it says, it does not exist, the report that, that, that for over two years, the mayor comes up and he says, oh, my God, Stan Johnson, we got, we've had Jim, Genesis, whatever it was, Engineering Company, no, it wasn't Genesis, whatever it was, and to do a report on Stan Johnson and said he's just, about everything he does was wrong. So in other words, just saying I'm worthless, stupid, ignorant, everything else. And what does, what does Mr. Jordan does? Last meeting, what does he does? By golly, he says, I want R-E-S-P-E-C-T, R-E-S-P-E-C-T for planning. I'm not getting it. So we're gonna talk about it. But as far as Stan Johnson, nothing. You don't, you don't get no respect from Stan Johnson. He's been, he's been here about 50 years.
Stop clock.
Yeah.
Hey, I feel like I do give you respect, and I hope you see that.
I don't see it.
Well, you need to open up.
We haven't met. We've only met one time.
Okay. That being, we won't go into what happened at that meeting.
Yeah.
That being said, that's me being a good guy. That being said, you've left. You were doing really good. You hit all the topics, you're calling out letters, and now you're not there. So I need you to get back on topic. Pick one, you got six of them.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll try. I just feel like this is on topic because you're misspending money, you're, excuse me, I'm sorry. You're misspending money, you're not, you're not making decisions when you should be making decisions. And this, for example, like, I mean, we're gonna talk about these things, but you know what? I just think spraying people with sewage is a bad thing. Why don't you just decide tonight, turn off the fountains? You won't do it. You won't do it. You won't. You won't admit that you're making a mistake. And the thing is, these people get sick. And one of these people that got sick that I talked about has got a bad immune system. You could have killed her. What do you care? I don't see that you care. Because you would rather, you would rather have somebody get injured and hurt rather than admit that you did something wrong. That's what the city is. You're foolish jackasses. I can't believe it.
Stop clock. Call, tell me where you're at, so I can catch up.
Okay. All right, here's where I am.
Give me a letter.
Okay. Let me pull that, here, I got it right here.
Give me a letter and talk about that letter.
Is that, is that, is that?
Start the clock.
For example, on 12H, no, 8H, the cameras, they're $25,000, body cameras and so forth like that, I'm saying approval of that. I think that's a good idea. But you know, when you approve this, you ought to think about getting an engineer to say something about what's going on. Because all we're getting is dishonesty up here, dishonesty and violation of laws. You can hire an attorney to show, to review these laws that I gave you. You're not going to do it. Okay. G, 8G, acceptance of easement from Wave Developments. That's another issue in there. I say approve that one. Okay? Is that all right, Mr. Diesel?
Yes, yes, I'm following you.
The, I mentioned about 8F, about the legal services. I mean, you know, maybe we can farm out legal services that Mr. Broom's not handling. He's not handling. In other words, all these issues I give you about violation of laws, compensatory stores and so forth like that, violation of flooding of property, changing zoning by flooding property, changing of zoning by changing wetlands, and this thing right here. This is a venue, right here, this is a venue for rezoning and taking property without due process. And Sarah Stokel doesn't care, she's on another planet. Anyhow, it's something you need to look at. In other words, you're outsourcing this, maybe you ought to outsource what Mr. Broom is, seems like he's on another planet, another space cadet.
Come on, come on.
I mean, it's pretty obvious. I mean, okay, read this right here, look at this. It says, it says, it says, that I gave you, it says, "The City of Titusville reviewed dams, several dams, and the dams don't even show what they flood." Can anyone believe that? What kind of engineering is that? Repeatedly. I doubt that they did it in Mr. Jordan's subdivision also. Parkland Estates. Never submitted it to FEMA. Says, it says that 65 million gallons of water, that's 200 acre feet of water, was additionally danned up by the, and it says it does it, this is amazing, it does it without flooding any property. Of course, that's impossible. It's impossible. And right now, in other words, you got it from the newspaper, it says, it says that 7 million gallons of water.
Stop clock. Give me a letter.
You need, pardon?
We're on consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
You signed up for six items, and you're sometimes talking about them and sometimes not.
Okay, so, so I think that we're talking about the money.
Start the clock.
And, pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. 8B, purchase of SWAT body armor and so forth. I went neutral on that, but I think it's something, it's something that's important to do, but it's also important to think about what we should do right now, right now that you're bypassing, you're avoiding making decisions about spraying people with sewage. It's just a bad idea. Okay. Let me get away from spraying people with sewage. You're probably fed up with that, you don't want ever to talk about it, and you ignore it, but maybe somebody will die. Okay. I went into 8D, that's the telemetry radios, $78,000. I want you to understand is that right now, is we have sewage going into the river right now. It's hot. Space View Park is hot. It's hot from, and we're going to spend $78,000 to make a decision tonight, but we're not going to make a decision about that sewage that's going to the river right tonight, when it rains. We're not going to do it. We're going to let it happen. And maybe you'll get fined. I hope you do. Because I'm just disgusted with the disrespect that I get here, R-E-S-P-E-C-T.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
All right. No other cards on the consent agenda. All right, do I have any comments, questions from the council? Member Jordan?
I want to make a motion.
Okay, we are ready to take the motion for consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8H.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for passing A through H on consent agenda. May we have a roll call vote?
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager, would you please introduce the ordinances?
Yes, sir, we're on Ordinance 9, correction, Agenda Item 9A, which is Ordinance Number 7, 2021, relating to Public Purpose Variances. City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 7, 2021. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by establishing a variance process to be heard by the city council for projects determined to serve a public purpose. By amending Chapter 34 Procedures, Article 5, Variances and Appeals, adding a new Division 9, Variances for Public Purpose Projects, including applicability, criteria for granting variances, required application, notice requirements, hearing the decision, providing perseverance, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on February 3, 2021, and recommended approval 6-1 as submitted. The member voting in the negative expressed concerns about maintaining the integrity of the BAA and their role, and felt the city council should accomplish their goal in a different way. On December 8, 2020, City Council approved advisability for staff to develop a process by which city council could decide variances to land development regulations for projects determined to be further, to further a public use. On January 12, 2021, City Council provided additional feedback to staff and council would consider only projects determined to serve the public purpose. Further, council desired a policy and procedure with established criteria to evaluate and determine when a project serves a public purpose, and requiring a majority rather than a supermajority vote to make the final decision. In order to further clarify the intent, the attached ordinance includes changes to the terms wastewater, water, and stormwater facilities to public utilities, parking facilities to public parking facilities. In Section 34, 312-1, an additional phrase, "project and/or" to Section 34, 312-2A5, these changes are highlighted. Should be noted that Section 34, 394 provides that home roof powers development agreements may provide for variance or waivers from any applicable land development regulations of the city under specific conditions. Information regarding variances, waivers approved by other local governments and governing bodies is attached. Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions that you may have on this. Is your final public hearing on Ordinance Number 7, 2021?
Ms. Busaka.
I'm here to answer any questions I can.
I'll have the first question. Just to clarify for me, I feel like it was read there, but I've struggled with this from the beginning. Who determines if it goes to the private sector, or does it, when it comes to council, that it's public? How does that decide it? How do we know which ones are not going to come to us and which ones are?
Well, the staff would be the first gatekeeper that you have. We understand that the intent is that this serve a public purpose. So if someone were to come up and say, I need to put a shed in a easement, we would say, there is no public purpose to that. Now, I think that if council is not satisfied that the staff can serve as that gatekeeper to limit the number of things that you see, then you could add additional words in here that could make that much more definitive. We talked about that at the last meeting in Section 34, 312.1, where it currently says, "such as public transportation facilities," it could say, "limited to public facilities." So I see that there may be the opportunity for also council to say that this would have to be a public-private partnership. So let's say that the, there's someone who wants to build something downtown, and they're willing to construct a parking garage, because we want to see additional parking, and the developer says, you know, I'd like to have some leeway as far as the footprint, and not worry about putting in, let's say, landscaping, because that way I can make the footprint larger. Then I would say that if that was going to be a public-private partnership, there would be some kind of agreement that would be entered into with this council to say that the public has the right to utilize that parking structure. So those are the options that I can think of, or of course, you can leave it to be flexible here. I can tell you that what happens is when staff, the first one of these that comes along, whatever that is, council will clearly provide some direction to staff. So if someone were to come in and want to do something inconsistent with what council has said, we would say, council has already had that discussion, and this project is not going to meet that. I honestly don't see that this is going to happen very often, but if it does, one of the things that we think about as a staff member is that if a lot of variances come in, then maybe we have to look at the code itself and make a change. Because that means that for whatever reason, it's not fitting. So I see the options as, leave it as it is, allow the staff to act as the gatekeeper, to put more specific language into this code. I think those are the two options.
How effective, well, first of all, I'm looking at the word limited to as versus such as, limited to might make the gatekeeper a little stronger. So I'd be for whatever makes the gatekeeper a little stronger. But is there a, by being the gatekeeper, are you the final, you can't go to the council, this doesn't apply to council?
No, sir, I think ultimately that council would have to decide, the first question would be on the agenda, is this or is this not a public project? And if the answer is, or doesn't serve a public purpose, if the answer is, this does not serve a public purpose, then I don't think you go on to the second question, which is, do we grant the variance?
I guess what I was hoping for, and I remember Jordan spoke of a process earlier with the trees and the water, et cetera, you know, in engineering, well, we too, in education, especially coaching and the playbook, we have a process and a play-by-play. I want to, I don't want to, as a council, have them come to me and then us decide if we hear it. I'd like it to be going through the gatekeeper, and the gatekeeper says, you go over here, you're private, you go over here, you're public, so you can go to the council. And I don't want to have them come over here and say, well, do we hear them or do we not? I want that done before it gets to us.
In that case, what I would suggest is that there is, you could start with baby steps on this and see how you feel, and you could limit this to specifically public projects. If someone came in with the example I gave you of the parking garage and said, I'm willing to enter into a public-private partnership, that could be brought to this council, they could always direct us to amend the code, and then you could do that. So if you wanted to limit it, my suggestion is that you very specifically take the words "public" out, and then we would have, and then you add language such as, instead of such as, "limited to," and that would be very, you wouldn't need much of a gatekeeper because the language would be very precise.
And that's what I would like to see. What I don't want this to become is we, it comes to us and we decide if we hear it or not. If it's on our agenda, that means it's been decided, we hear it. Member Stokel.
Along those same lines with that question. So if we were to pass it as it is now, and somebody were to come to the city, and you guys say, okay, that one's not a public purpose, it would go to BAA, and they say, no, we don't agree with you, would then you guys put it on our agenda in theory, or would they come before us for petitions and requests?
Could you tell me who doesn't agree? Is it the BAA that doesn't agree, or the applicant?
The applicant, you guys say it needs to go to BAA, it's not public purpose, as the gatekeeper, and then they, the applicant would say, we don't, we think it is a public purpose.
I think that if they make their application, they have the right to come, as long as that says "private." So I think they have the right. I mean, I can tell them that staff will recommend against it, I can tell, I can show them a video of this discussion, but sometimes people are determined that they can charm their way out of anything.
And then?
I'm one of those people, so I understand them very well.
Okay, and then it would potentially then come to us, and then we would either say, okay, yes, this is a public purpose, or we'd say, no, this is actually a private matter, and with three, at least three people saying that, it would go back to BAA.
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's correct. But?
Now, you can eliminate the public portion of that, or the private portion of that, like Peggy suggested, and do baby steps, and make it only for public projects.
Okay.
That makes it very clear.
And then if we were to have some issues arise, or some people, maybe we address it at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Member Jordan?
I don't want to muddy the water. I thought the whole focus when we started this thing was about the public purpose. So if we just leave it with "public," right now, we have the BAA, and everybody goes through that. The challenge I had was, we were elected officials, if the public wants to do something, the government wants to do something, and it turns out that the non-elected officials in the BAA say, you can't do it, I got a problem with that. Because we're here to do the public's bidding, if you will, to make sure we do the right thing for the public. So if we just maintain that this is for public purpose, then there won't be a problem. And so you won't get an applicant who is going to be coming to us and say, I disagree with the gatekeeper, because it won't be a private person going to them. It is the public that is going to be coming to us only. So I think that just makes it clean, and we don't have to worry about it. And I think it goes right with Mayor Diesel. He doesn't want all this stuff to come, we don't want all this stuff to come to us, we just want to deal with the public purpose stuff only. If there's an occasion where we actually have talked about getting a, what do you call the thing?
A dumpster.
No, the car, the, a parking, parking garage. And it's a, in our minds, this is something that we can do with private industry, private money, then I think we should be able to say, okay, we're going to do this for them. But that's on an extremely exceptional basis. I think we should start, like you said, maybe the baby steps, is let us just do the public first, and if an occasion comes, then we can handle that problem. I think I also heard, we're not getting many of these, and we are probably talking more about this than what we actually going to get in the first place. So it may be one or two a year at most, in my mind.
Vice Mayor.
I agree with Sarah and Robert. I think public purpose would be great to start with, and don't want to make, we want to make sure that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals has loads of work, so we sure don't want to take a whole lot from them.
Say that again. What did you think was great?
Public, like you said.
Right.
Limited.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, that's, so I don't get confused, that's the whole basis. We don't want anything to do with private.
Right.
Okay. Member Robinson?
Well, I still stand as it mudders the water, and I'll agree with you, if he goes back and be a little bit more specific, I'll read it again and look at it again. But right now, I still think it's still too much muddy water there, because I listened to the discussion that we have right now on the diet, said that it's just, it's something that goes into the category, if it's not broken, why are we trying to fix it, as far as I'm concerned right now.
Member Stokel.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, I think we're all on the same page. Okay, so I just want to clarify, I think we're all on the same page. These are for public purposes. What we're saying is amending it to only public applicants, not private applicants. So, okay, I think we're all in agreement.
Give me an example of three public applicants.
City of Titusville wants to put antennas on top of our building where it's restricted. City Titusville wants to build a fire department that the easements wouldn't be appropriate. We may have to wait, you know, and...
Good one. The marina, there are, as you know, you can only build a marina in certain places. And right now, I'm pretty sure that the existing marina doesn't meet the shoreline setback requirements. Now, it's a preference to have an expansion to an existing marina rather than building a new marina. That is better for the environment. So if somebody decided that they wanted to be able to replace the marina building, they may not be able to do that. And that may be true of several waterfront projects. And I think that we all agree that public access to a waterfront is an important asset in this community. So I think that that's another one that is potential.
Clerk, call the cards, please.
The first card is Al Taylor.
Hello, Mr. Taylor, your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My official name is Thomas Taylor, but I go by Al. Twenty-eight twenty St. Charles Court, Titusville, Florida. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have been on the Planning and Zoning Board for eight years. I have now been on the Board of Adjustments for 10 years. And I serve as the chairman at this time for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I'll be quite honest, I am not for or against this item. I only found about, out about this last night, or yesterday afternoon, excuse me. What I am speaking about is, this is something that concerns our board. I'm saying, oh, by the way, the opinions being stated are mine personally, not anyone else's on the board. I've had no other discussion with any other members on the board about this subject. So this is my personal opinion, please. My problem is, you're making changes to what this board does and we have not been notified. We have not had a meeting since last year, evidently prior to y'all discussing it in December. So we did not have a meeting in January. And I feel that if you're going to make changes to what a board does, that that board should be involved, or at least told what the reasoning is. I mean, honestly, I've listened a little bit back and forth here. I don't understand it. I haven't had time to understand it. There's, your agenda items is not available on the website, so I could not pull up the full, all the information that you have. So my concern is that there should have been some input from whatever board, whether it's planning and zoning in the future, Environmental Board, whatever. If you're going to make changes from the way we're presently doing it, I'm not saying we're doing it right. But if we're going to make changes, they can be good changes. But I think the board should be at least alerted or have an email or have some kind of information about what is being proposed to change. And so, like I said, I'm not for it, I'm not against it, because I just don't know what it is. But I think we should be, I'm not saying we have a vote, but I think you should be able to receive input from the members that you, we are serving at your pleasure. You appoint us, just like you did earlier on the other boards. So I believe that we should have, have an opinion. And so that is, that is not, thank you.
I appreciate that, hold up in case somebody has a question. But first thing I would say is that I can certainly see that point. If I'm on that board and there's some changes coming to that board, it'd be nice to at least know that, hey, we're proposing this. Staffs, is there anything we want to add to that? Or is there any communication that we want to talk about or no?
We were asked earlier this week about what was happening. We provided that information. Asked for, the BAA members asked for a link to watch the meeting tonight. And one member emailed us and asked for the rationale, which we provided. They told us, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
So Al, now that you know that it's here and we're talking about it, is this something you'd want to take back to the board and have a discussion with them?
I'm not sure I'm versed enough, we meet tomorrow night. And I'm not sure I'm versed enough to give them a proposal. Like I say, you're, yes, we did get the email. I made the request, actually yesterday, that staff, at least send an email to everyone on the board that this agenda item was going to be on tonight's being up. And I understand it was quite a lengthy talk from the Board of Adjustments and Appeal meeting, which I admit, I did not watch. I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning, I apologize. Too many committees.
Yes.
So can I, I just don't, I just don't know. And can I relay this information to the board tomorrow night? I don't think I have time to comprehend that. So whether you, whatever you want to do, it's your choice, of course. But I just would like to say that I personally feel that there should have been some consulting. We should have been consulted, or at least had emails sent that this was going on.
I think it would have been good in that because you guys do it all the time, you may have had some ideas that would have been helpful. And I understand Peggy's point that usually everything goes through planning and zoning, so it went through planning and zoning.
And I admit too, that sometimes we get things before us, we go, why are we listening to this? I mean, it's just a city, why do we have to go through all the hearing? I'm not, that's why I say I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just saying we should be able to be knowledgeable about the matter. Thank you.
Member Jordan.
Yeah, I just need to understand and I appreciate what you're saying. I know you really care. Actually, I had my son come before you and I didn't get everything I wanted, but I accepted it. So there's no ill will here, what I'm about to say. I just need to understand something. It went to P and Z because...
It's, all ordinances are required.
Okay, it is not a require...
I shouldn't say all ordinances, but land development regulations are required.
Okay, so it was not a requirement to go to the BAA?
Correct.
Okay, I just need to understand that because I was feeling the same way as what Al is saying. But there was nothing, there was no ill will, there was nothing going astray. We didn't intentionally not give it to them.
Correct. And I want to apologize, honestly, I had my marching orders from council and I was focused on, you know, my, I had been told what to do and I was doing it. And so probably it was oversight on staff's part not to send this. And I apologize, it was never our intent to make you feel less important or that we, your input is not important. But I was just doing what council had told us to do.
Well, I just wanted to make that clear. I really didn't understand why I went to P and Z and not to you all because I would have assumed it would have gone to you all, but that's not the way it operates. I'm not sure if it would make a difference in my mind because I know where my focus was as far as what we were trying to do. And it was really the public interest. So if BAA came back and three of the members say, I like it, and three say, I don't like it, I don't think it would have changed my mind that much because I know my focus is to make sure that the public is doing. So no disrespect occurred. I really appreciate the way you presented it, I really do. But I honestly thought maybe you all should have seen the thing, to tell you the truth. But now I understand what the process is. And I'm comfortable, but kind of uncomfortable because the way you presented it, I wish you had seen it. But if you had come back and said something I didn't like, then I wish you hadn't seen it, so.
Member Stokel.
Yep, maybe moving forward, and I don't know if it is part of our policy, but if we do make changes with any of our boards or it's proposed, just send out a courtesy email because, yeah, if I was on that board, just in case there's something. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much.
Call the next card, please.
Laura Lee Thompson, thirty-five fifty Irwin Avenue. And I'm not sure whether I might have been partially responsible for what happened here. But the timing seemed like we talked about a parks project on the causeway at the last BAA meeting and then the very next city council meeting, all of a sudden, there's this rush to take away some of the responsibility from the BAA when it refers to a public project. I don't know why you guys would want to pile more work onto yourselves when you have a perfectly wonderful and competent board that can look at stuff like this. My question is, does this happen all the time? Or is this knee-jerk reaction to what happened at the last BAA meeting? And I agree with the member voting in the negative, expressing concerns about maintaining the integrity of the BAA in their role. I mean, that's what they're supposed to do, is look at projects. And he felt that the city council could accomplish the goal in a different way. I agree with that. I think that these projects should go in front of the BAA. And then if you don't agree with their decision, then figure out what to do about it then. But I don't, I don't think this was done, I think this was done in a very expedited manner. I had no idea that the BAA hadn't even been informed about what was going on. But I, is this, is this a problem? Does this happen a lot? Is there, or was this a reaction to what happened with that particular project at the last BAA meeting? That's my question I posed to you guys.
Yeah, Member Jordan.
Yeah, I can tell you that when I found out, we're always learning something as we're up on the dice. And one of the things I always have had a concern with is when we have commissions and boards that we appoint. In my humble opinion, if there is something that is going on, we should have an opportunity to speak about whether we want to go in the direction or not. One of the things I found out about the BAA is if a decision is made there from people that we have appointed, who are not elected, the next step, if we don't like it, including the public entity, you have to go to court. That is not a good thing. That is not a good option in my mind for us to be spending money going to court for a board that we appointed. And so when the board, the BA board says, well, there should be a different way of doing it, and I even heard you just say, well, if something comes up and you don't like it, then you can come up with a solution. Where the solution that we have right now in the books is that we have to go to court. That should not be the option for an elected board when we want to make a decision about something that's a public matter. And that's why it's separated.
Okay, and I don't disagree with you, Mr. Jordan. Is there a way that you can change this thing where they have to go to court? That would be...
That would be wonderful.
Wonderful. And I think, I just, I don't understand why you guys would want to add more to your plate when you have a perfectly good board that can listen to stuff like this.
Let me say it again, because there is a challenge there. In my mind, if I've got a public entity that needs to do something and, you're not listening to me anymore, are we?
No, I'm just looking at the city attorney. I'm listening this year and I'm looking at the city attorney with my eyes.
Yeah, but it's just, it is a concern to me, I will tell you. It wasn't a knee-jerk reaction, but it was a concern to me that we were doing something like this. And the only out for us, when we didn't agree with a board that is not elected but appointed by this commission, that we have to go to court. That doesn't make sense to me at all.
Okay.
And it's not serving the public well, in my mind.
Well, you heard me say earlier, the last thing I want to do is have these all come to us and us decide what we hear and what we don't.
Exactly.
I certainly understand the public side of things where if it has to do with our fire station and we're the elected officials. I also, the first time I ever heard the concern, it came to if BAA makes a decision, the only way to appeal it is to court. And I think there is some concern, as Member Jordan expressed, there needs to be some sort of elected official hand in there somewhere. You know, it would be like all of our other boards. If they make a decision, you know, it's a binding decision and if you want to disagree, then you got to go to court. Well, none of those other boards are elected officials. So this, like Member Jordan said, I tend to agree with that side of it. It doesn't make sense. I also tend to agree, as you heard with Mr. Robinson, our member Robinson, that it could be a can of worms and it's, as we discuss this now. My question was, I'm not 100% sure, I feel like we have the answer. But where, who decides and how do we decide? And now, does it come to us and we decide if we hear it or not? I'm a little concerned about that. I am hearing this back up a little bit and say, take some baby steps. It sounds like maybe we can remedy this as we go. But I'm concerned, I'm concerned how we're going to do this. But I also think that any board that is named, you know, appointed by us, that shouldn't be the final forevermore, got to go to court to disagree. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nelson, I'm sorry.
Well, I have an idea, maybe. We'll see what Ms. Basakis thinks about it. So what about if everything goes to BAA? And those public purpose applications? As opposed to going to court, they come to us on appeal.
Our attorney would love to answer that question.
Oh, Richard, come on.
So what you're asking is if a public project or city project goes to BAA?
Right.
And let's say it's denied.
Okay.
Can that be appealed to you as an interim step of going to court?
Right.
You could do that. Now, when that's appealed to you, you'll be judging it under the same criteria the BAA saw. So you will be deciding whether they made a mistake and applied the criteria inappropriately or wrong. Because if it's denied, it's going to be appealed to you. So you will review it in the same manner they reviewed it.
Okay.
Before it goes to court. So if you want to approve it, you would be, you know, maybe find some error. You'd see where they didn't apply it correctly and it would come to you.
And if I could, the BAA is a hardship based on the property.
Right.
What you have in front of you is based on operational necessity. This is the example that's wandering around in my head. We have a speed limit that everyone's supposed to go by. However, when you have an ambulance, you want them to go past the speed limit and run the red lights. Because they have an operational need to do that. Now, we're not asking, believe me, on their way back from the hospital, you want them to go through the stop signs and you want them to do the speed limit. But on the way over, if I'm in that ambulance, believe me, I'm happy if they're running as fast as they can. So that's how I think about this. There are other communities that do this. The city of Cocoa can override any provision of the zoning code or any other code with a finding that the public interest favoring the proposed project override, the proposed override outweighs the strict application of the code. The city of Melbourne and several other cities currently authorize variances when approving subdivisions. So it's limited to that. But that's not even a public project, that's a private project. The city of Cocoa Beach currently considers variances for height. The Rivard County has variances from the coastal setback provisions that may be authorized by the Board of County Commissioners based on criteria. And they have defined best public interest as either a public or private project, which clearly demonstrates a net benefit to the public. So what we're doing here is different than we've done before, but it's not inconsistent with what some of our other communities here do.
So what I'm thinking is you have a public purpose project. And we're going to say BAA denies it, the application. But it's something that is operationally necessary for us. So therefore, we have the right to hear it. And if we decide that it's operationally necessary, I don't think I could say that three times. But that we could turn around and approve it in those cases.
Can't do it.
Nope. There really wouldn't be an appeal of what they've done because the appeal would be the criteria they applied and their reasoning that's being appealed. The reason this was crafted was, to your point... The reason this was crafted was, to your point, if council wanted to evaluate a project separate from the strict BAA criteria because of public, and look at the public necessity of the project, and the operational function, and the land, one of the examples, you know, you want a fire station, and you have a problem with the setback, or the antenna's on the station, that may be related, or may not, to the property, but to the functioning and public purpose behind the need for that variance, which is different than the criteria BAA has. So you certainly could send it to boards and get recommendations before it comes to you.
Right.
But in the strict sense of an appeal, an appeal from BAA for a public project would come, as you know, based on what was seen and heard and the criteria applied by that board, because you'd be appealing their decision on that criteria. To change the criteria to you is not necessarily an appeal at that point. They could, they get an adverse opinion, they could file under this process and try and get council to agree that it's based on operational necessity, but that would be a separate set of criteria, separate decision.
You're going to say that all over again.
Could I ask a question, and then he can answer both? Rich, are you suggesting that we would then give the BAA this criteria rather than the criteria they use for other? So we would have like two parallel tracks. If you're a public, you would have this criteria that we have developed for simpler. But if you're a private project, you would have the criteria that we see?
No, I wasn't suggesting that you have two types of applications, two criteria going to BAA, two decisions, and one appeal comes to council. I was just saying, you know, you mentioned some of the other cities and counties that do variances, and sometimes they'll have their PMZ make recommendations before council makes a decision on a variance, like subdivision variances. A lot of cities, or several cities, have subdivision variances go to their council as part of a plating process, they don't go to the BAA. But they do get recommendations from their planning and zoning board before they rule on those variances that have to do with land development regulations. I was just mentioning that, because there are situations where you do have your board involved, although you're making the decision. So you have a situation where you can be in a circumstance where you're appealing, handling an appeal from BAA based on their criteria, and the city or the public entity didn't like the decision, so they appealed it to you, but you're going to judge it under that same criteria. Or a situation, this, where you have different criteria for a public project based on operational necessity, and that criteria that comes straight to you. Either one, whatever council would like to do, if you just want to have appeals based on BAA criteria come to you for public projects, and you decide it, you would weigh it based on exactly what was presented to BAA and make a decision where that decision was correct or not.
Well, I think you need to put somewhere in there that part of what we're using as a guideline is operational necessity. That should be one of the criteria, you think?
Do I think?
Yeah.
I think that's the intent of this.
Yeah.
So the seven lift stations that are currently going through the process come to the, into development review, and we require landscaping.
Right.
Currently, there's a waiver provision for landscaping. So what happened was, the staff went to the city manager and said, this code allows a waiver provision so that landscaping does not have to be around a lift station if that's an operational necessity. Mr. Stauffer met, he said, there's several reasons why we need to make sure we know that lift stations are operating. One, we do a visual inspection. Two, we don't necessarily want people living inside or vandalizing, and this is a security issue. So we have limited ability to do that. Now, I don't know that council wants to give the staff that kind of, or the city manager that kind of administrative ability. I do believe that that would not be unprecedented either. Brevard County does give the county manager in certain limitations. And again, that's part of their public interest, best public interest, they allow that to occur for certain things like navigational channels and industrial uses within the floodplain, that waiver provision is given. This was a step up from a waiver provision from staff to allow the council to decide. But that is also an option, is to say the city manager, and I'm sure he'll be pleased to have this responsibility. Thank goodness, I've already had my evaluation this year.
He's going back.
He could, I suppose he could resend it. But that is what, there are very limited circumstances in which that has been, that is currently in the code, but most of it relates to landscaping.
So if we did a waiver provision, we could do it, limit that to public purpose?
Yes, and I would, if that were even a, I'd like to step back and tell you that one of my strengths is, I know they're talking about me, one of my strengths is ideas, and I pride myself on quantity, not quality, of ideas. So let's start from that. But in order to do that waiver provision, there would have to be some very specific criteria. And I think that some of the criteria in here may be a start, but I would not suggest that this would be perhaps the only criteria. I'm sure the city manager would like to weigh in on that, and as would the attorney. So if that's the direction you want to go, then I would think that we would just start all over again, because there's lots of code work that would have to be done to look at the different provisions that would be done unless the council just wanted to give across the board a waiver.
All right, let's move on. We're going to go, Member Jordan, Member Stokoe, and then we're moving back to the...
Okay, I'm going to repeat what I said before. We're spending way more time than we're probably going to get in a given year on something like this. I was almost happy about what you said until I remembered that you can't have BAA criteria and then bring it to us, because we still have to judge it by the BAA criteria. So you're not doing anything. The only way to fix it is what we have with this new ordinance, is to allow us to do the public, because the criteria is different. If the criteria is different, then we can judge it differently because of the public purpose, operational purpose. So I think we're fine with that. So I think we should just go on with this. If there is some challenges, I think we have a gatekeeper that will make sure we only get the ones that are public purpose, and we can go on with this thing and be done with it.
Member Stokoe.
Yep, thank you. I just had a couple clarifying questions. With, and I don't know if you know this, Peggy, or not, with the city of Cocoa, in the way that their code reads, do they even have the court present at all? Like where, if they were to appeal, like for instance, ours appeals right now to the courts, theirs appeals to their city council, does the court get involved at all in any of their cases?
It would be after the council's decision's a final order, that would be appealable through the court.
Okay, so as their code reads right now, as far as you know, are they still applying the same criteria? Should an applicant appeal to the city council from the BAA board, their BAA board?
Keep your mouth closed when you're reading that. I don't have the code in front of me, but anytime you're...
And I'm sorry.
Right, if you're appealing, in my opinion, if you're appealing a decision of a board, that appeal comes to you based on the record of that board and the criteria they applied, because the appeal is, they made a wrong decision, they're appealing to you to reverse that decision based on the facts presented at that hearing, which would have been the criteria.
Okay.
The one-sentence note that I have says that the city of Cocoa may override any provision of the zoning code or other code upon a finding that the public interest favoring the proposed override outweighs the strict application of the code.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, call the next card, please.
The last card is Dan Johnston.
Well, Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer, lived here for about 50 years, veteran and all this kind of stuff, former engineer for the city of Titusville and Brevard County, professional engineer. So we're talking here about operational necessity, and we're talking about public interest. Do I know anything about that? Well, I bought a property in 1984, my wife and I, and my golly, we went to the city, or I went to the city, and said, you know, can you rezone my property, because I want to develop it? And they said, there's no way that the city can stop you, because it's conformance with such and such in conformance with this and the land you... So we bought the property, and then a few months later, it seems like the city has a different interest. In fact, is, after I did the preliminary plating, prepared it, a planner came up to me and said, well, the city has a different interest on use of your property. So the property that we had, it was planned for flooding and planned for no development. And so a few years later, is what they did, was the city just administratively rezoned it without my knowledge. They did it through the newspaper, I didn't even know about it. And so, all the work I did for preparing it, and also the people who owned it before me had planned to develop it, they just took it away. And this is what you see here. This is an example of city's use for operational necessity, public necessity and operational, whatever you want to call it, because you can change the flood zones, you can change the zoning, you can do whatever you want to. In fact, is, I even asked the city attorney one time, said, I want to go to this board meeting where we, the city is, you know, violation of codes and so forth, and say that the city has violated all kinds of laws. I said, well, I can't, it won't work, because the city won't sue itself, which makes sense. They won't even listen to it. In fact, is, you won't listen to me. You won't listen to me. And you're not listening, and so why am I here? I don't know. Because you're liars and cheats.
Time's up, sir.
May I have two more minutes?
Don't think so.
I see nobody. Thank you. Is that the last card? All right, I hate to move forward without Vice Mayor here, but let's go ahead and see what we've got here. So council, do I have a motion to move forward on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number seven, yeah, seven dash 2021 relating to public purpose variances.
I have a motion on 9A. Do I have a second?
Second, with our changes that we made, with the, only if it's for the public purpose?
Yes.
Our public entity, I mean. Okay.
I think that's a change, though. I think that's the way we're supposed to do this.
I don't, I think it is, I think it is a change.
It is.
It's a change.
It says, "public and private entities with a public interest."
So they were both public purpose, this one will just be public entity as the applicant?
Okay, I certainly want to hear public.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way I thought it was. Okay, I have a motion, and...
Mayor, it might suggest that we hang on until Member Nelson...
For discussion.
All right, with that, let's just take a five, let's take a seven-minute recess.
Seven minutes, take you that long?
No, I may not even go anywhere, but I don't know when she's coming back. No, I may not even go anywhere, but I don't know when she's coming back. Now, we have a, we're taking the motion.
Yep, I'm moved.
And we have a second. And we now are moving roll call vote.
Could we restate the motion and second? I don't believe Ms. Nelson, Member Nelson was here for that.
Okay, good idea. He had to read a lot to do that one, too.
I can clarify.
Clarify since you seconded.
Yes, so we move to pass what is, what we currently have in front of us with the amendment of if it's a public entity, not just for public purpose, but public purpose, but it has to be a public entity. That's applying.
Did you want to change such as to limited to as well?
Not really. It's fine.
I, and I'll go with the flow on that, but I think if you go limited to, that certainly gives you a little more concrete answer. I mean, if you go such as, well, such as could be fire station and then, well, this is kind of like a such as. But if it's limited to fire stations or public entities. So with that being said, we can move forward.
Because the reason I thought of for public projects, not private projects such as, I mean, limited to, public projects limited to.
My God, you muddy in the water.
That's what.
I feel, I kind of feel like the public applicant, the applicant being public is kind of limiting in and of itself.
Right.
So I'm kind of fine how it is.
All right, like I said, I can go with it. All right, we have, I have the motion, we have the second, we have everyone here. So clerk, we're ready.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
No.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. We move on to the next ordinance. Nine B.
I'm going to read the quasi judicial procedures. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the side of the council chambers. Those speaking in favor will request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak for the city council, sign an oath card. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised? Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
No.
Thank you.
And counsel, we are on item nine B. The Planning and Zoning Commission tabled the request to allow consideration of additional information on the request, including three items. As-built drawings for the stormwater pond. Number two, the documentation that was submitted to the Saint John's River Management District, providing that the encroachment would not cause an increase in the design storage volume of the pond. And number three, requests the presence of the engineer of record at the following, at their following meeting. The motion passed unanimously. The application was submitted by a property owner at two eight, or two eight two zero Saint Mark's Drive. Mr. Patel is requesting to vacate a portion of the public utility drainage easement in order to accommodate the installation of a porch. The drainage report has been received and approved by the city's development engineer, confirming that the proposed vacation will not impact the stormwater pond capacity. There are no objections from utility companies to vacate the ten feet of the forty-four, fifty-four foot easement. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have on this item.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Busaka? We have cards on this item.
One card, Stan Johnston.
Yes, sir.
Stan Johnston, I'm a registered professional engineer and I've done a number of stormwater ponds. Actually, I'm also, I've been a registered professional answer there since nineteen and eighty. I have my own transit and tape and, and all kinds of stuff. And I've done site plans, complete site plans, surveying and the engineering. So I'm looking at what you've got here, this vacation of the easement, and I'm not, I don't see that I have any special problems with that. But, but interestingly, interestingly, is look at all the work. I mean, you go in that agenda item and see what has been done and what is, what P and Z is asking for and so forth. You're looking at this little item here and you're spending hours and hours on this thing. But you know what? I send, I send you something like this that is, is one sheet, one sheet, and it shows the flooding of property, which is actually, it's still, it's still a valid design approved by Saint John's River Water Management District. And it shows the flood, this design at elevation fifteen for flooding twenty-seven acres, twenty acres owned by Stan and Gwen Johnston, is still valid in the Saint John's. And you know what? How much, how much the city has done in reviewing this, although I've, I've submitted this some time ago? This is nineteen and eighty-four. This is what this calculation, nineteen eighty-four. Today is, is, is two thousand, twenty twenty-one. My golly, that's over, that's over thirty-five years ago. And you know what? They, they, the city has spent less than, I think, less than fifteen minutes of reviewing it, although they spent probably at least twenty-five hours of hearing, listening to me and, and doing that. So, so it, it just seems like this is, what is it, cognitive dissonance? Is that, maybe that's the wrong word? Is this is just a complete nonsense? I mean, I even went to Jo Lynn Nelson and said, hey, listen, you know, my son just died and I'm going to drop out. Do you mind if we talk about this? And would you go ahead and help the people over there at Parkland Estates of what they're, what's going on there? Because, you know, they're, they're the same situation as Baker Subdivision. She does nothing. She's, of course, she promised she'd, she'd do something, but of course, she just lied again, just like she's been doing all along. Yep. Nodding her head, yes or no, getting rid of Stan Johnston.
Stop clock.
Yeah.
Come on, go back to where you were.
Okay, all right.
Wait, wait, wait. Public, no, wrong. Request for easement, Saint Marks.
Yeah.
Okay, go.
But look at, look at, look at how much time was spent. It's incredible. And how, how much time is spent on this? Where, you know what, what the city did is they destroyed their records. The records are missing. On that dam at Carroll Avenue, it's gone. And so is the one at Parkland Estates. It's gone. It can be, you can recover some of it from Saint John's, but it's, the records are destroyed. They're destroyed, they're gone. And that's what happens in the city of Titusville. It just disappears.
Time's up, sir. Thank you.
Two more minutes, please.
I see none. Thank you. Card? All right, I'm looking, oh, I'm not looking. We are, need to make a vote to table it?
It's whatever counsel desires.
No, no, no motion then. Let's go.
I would move to table it. I don't think this is something that is time-sensitive and I would like to give Planning and Zoning the opportunity to hear it. I think, you know, sometimes it's easier to go ahead and, and vote and not give them the chance to be heard. And so I would like to have them have that opportunity to look at it and be heard.
Hey, well, I don't know how we would have moved forward. I'll be honest with you. I, I contrary to popular belief, and I told somebody today on that board, first thing I look at on our agenda is how they vote.
Right.
Well, if they tabled it, I feel pretty certain we're going to table it. So when it comes to, I mean, my only question was, do we need to vote to table it or can we just table it? So we can-
You have to have a motion.
Okay, so I will take that as a motion to table it.
I would suggest stating the time certain. Is this to your next meeting?
To our next meeting.
Would then, and will Planning and Zoning meet before that?
Yes.
So Planning and Zoning will meet before that?
Yes, the agenda will go out this week. We can do it.
Okay.
The agenda will be, no, P and Z will be next, will be the next meeting, next Wednesday and then the twenty, we'll be fine.
Member Stokel?
Yep, I just had a couple of questions. With their conditions that P and Z had on here, with, so say we had approved it, I'm, I'm okay with tabling it, but say we had approved it, would they have to get permission from Saint John's anyway before they could move forward? Just to clarify.
I believe they already have their permit.
Okay, so P and Z is just wanting the documentation to prove that?
Yes. The, as I understand it, the issue was that the information provided by the engineer showed that they were going to take out part of the drain, dredge a little bit of that stormwater pond where they were filling for their, this issue of their porch. But the question was, has the, over the years, has the stormwater pond filled in? And so they, that's why they wanted this, this additional documentation and the request was for the as-built so they could see exactly how deep it was supposed to be when it was constructed. So they're going back to trying to ask a question that Saint John's really didn't address.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Member Jordan?
Now, of course, I'm confused. That didn't make, well, it made sense what you said, it just didn't make any sense for the requirement. So they wanted the as-built drawings to say this thing was ten feet by whatever it is. And if it is, and now it's nine feet, then what?
Well, the concern was, I believe, that by filling in, if there's less capacity there now, by filling in, they will have additional problems. So there was a concern about exacerbating any drainage issues that are in that area. And then there was also a concern that if this is permitted for one person, can it be permitted for other people? And so they wanted, they wanted more opportunity to review this in light of those questions.
So the consequences of not getting the easement is what?
Right now, there has been some improvements put in without a permit. And that's how they came to us, is that they were putting in a porch without a permit. So ultimately, if they don't get their easement, they will either have to have a smaller porch or will have to remove what's currently there, the concrete pad that's currently there.
That's interesting.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm pondering something. So if, once they get all this information, they find that it is smaller than what it's supposed to be, then more than likely, they're going to deny it, I assume.
I really don't know. I mean, I think that is their concern. So it is certainly possible that they would have some kind of condition that related to that. There may be a condition that they can say that in addition to the fill that they're removing on the one side, that they could, you know, do additional fill removal. I don't know. But we do have an engineer on that, on planning and zoning, who, as you said, is very good with stormwater. So he's, I believe, going to be reviewing this with his technical expertise.
Okay, and this is not time-sensitive or anything?
Well, the, I'm sure that the gentleman that would like to finish his porch believes it's time-sensitive, but there is already some improvements on the site.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion to table. I had a question after that. I don't think I have a second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote. The table.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Mr.-
Yes.
Yes. And Mayor Diesel.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We move on to nine C.
On to nine C. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request with the recommendation to the applicant that he received the consent of Saint John's Water Management District and the Homeowners Association. The motion passed unanimously. An application was submitted by the property owners at one zero, one zero three six Catty Circle, requesting to vacate a portion of the public utility and drainage easement in order to install a screened enclosed swimming pool. All affected utilities and companies have been contacted. There are no objections to vacate this request. Recommended action is to approve the request to vacate five-foot portion of the ten-foot public utility drainage easement, easement on property located at one zero three six Catty Circle and approve the related resolution ten dash ten twenty, or twenty-one.
Okay, staff, anything? Ms. Busaka?
I just want to say that I want, I think that the staff language is a little confusing. So basically, what happened was at this meeting, that staff advised about the difficulty of the enforcement of the condition because we don't enforce homeowners association regulations. And there's a state law that says that we can't require a permit from another agency. So the recommendation was more advisory to the applicant so that they would not, I think, run afoul of either Saint John's or the homeowners association. But it was not a formal recommendation, as you're accustomed to seeing.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff? Cards, please.
Just a let you know, the applicant's here to answer questions, but doesn't wish to speak.
Do we have any questions for the applicant on this issue? Okay, we have no questions?
And then we have Stan Johnston.
And call the card.
Stan Johnston, I don't have any problem with your, but, but I want to understand is that there's a, there's something going on that's, that's nasty here and, and that's, that's has to do with the city council and city government here. And, and what I wrote to you is, is that I, I gave you written comments. It's about sixty pages or so. And on the first page, it says, it says, it says, "To tell the truth or to resign," is what I'm asking. And that does not include Pastor, Pastor Joe over here. And it says, "To tell the truth or resign for their particip, your participation in support of dishonesty, fraud, slander, defamation, provocation, insults, closed-door policy, blacklisting, arbitrary and capricious decisions, nonsense, malfeasance of office, incompetence, interference," and it goes on. But, but when they're talking about arbitrary and capricious, is that, is that, this is, this is obviously what's shown here.
Stop the clock. Stop the clock.
That's what I'm talking about, right here.
What I'm talking about is you signed up for nine C.
Exactly.
And nine C is what?
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about.
You haven't said a word about nine C.
Yes, I have. Yes, I have. In other words, you're spending so much time on this, I'm sorry, you're making an arbitrary and capricious decision because you're not giving the time.
No, you're not. We gave you a chance to talk about nine C and then we're going to go from there.
That's what I'm talking about. All right, nine C is, is that, is that, you look, look at the time that's spent on this. In other words, about this swimming pool and so forth. I know what it's about. I read it.
And that's what you're supposed to talk about.
Pardon?
That's what you signed up for.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about. Look at the time that's spent on this, all the time and so forth like that. You go into agenda and look at the time you spent on, 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 on information I gave you. For example, I was talking to you just a, a few minutes ago about missing records. You know what? You should be interested in missing records. The city of Titusville as-built that dam on Carroll Avenue where your mother-in-law is, she, they as-built in two thousand nine. In two thousand twelve, what happened? The records are gone. They're gone. Two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, records are gone. Over fifty thousand dollars spent on that project. Fifty thousand dollars.
Talk about nine C. You signed up for that.
That's what I'm talking about. In other words, this is an example of an arbitrary and capricious is that, is the city of Titusville is, is being- city of Tyresville is, is being, dirty deeds done dirt cheap. In other words, you're not given the right, in other words, you're given so much time to this little thing right here, but when you're talking about, and I show you pictures of flooding and so forth at Carroll Avenue, and you're not doing nothing about it.
You have.
Just like the sewage. Thank you.
Next card.
Number 11.
All right, any comment from counsel? Any questions from counsel? Do I have a motion and a second? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve request to vacate easement, vacation application number 6-2020, 1036 Catty Circle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Remember Stokel?
Yes.
Remember Robinson?
Yes.
Remember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys for being here for so very, very long. City manager, please introduce ordinance first readings.
Yes, sir. No ordinance first readings, no old business. We are now on 12A, Resolution 11, 2021. Staff periodically reviews the current community development fee structure and proposes modifications. The attached resolution includes the following changes. Change to the fee for master plan application fee that reduces the cost of the application when a master plan is accompanied by a comprehensive plan amendment or rezoning. Establishes a fee for inspection of impervious concrete that are required at least every two years. The proposed fee is consistent with the inspection fee for grease intercepts and private lift stations, annual inspection conducted by Water Resources Department. And the last is establishes a fee for public purpose variance, consistent with the current fee for variances considered by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have on this Resolution 11, 2021.
Ms. Busaka, any comments? Counsel, any questions or concerns? For staff, call the cards, please.
One card, it's Stan Johnston.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I, hold up, Stan. Remember Robinson?
Yes, isn't the impervious concrete, it's supposed to be washed yearly?
It's inspected. It's supposed to be maintained, and however the person chooses to do that's up to them. But we will inspect it every two years, right?
Every two years, or if needed, more often. The staff will go out, look at it, make sure that it's functioning as it should. You can prob, you can easily tell that if there's puddles, right? And then we would go out and.
If it's holding water, yeah.
Yes, sir. So it's as required.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm speaking to you tonight as a citizen and as a professional engineer, and that I've written you about this one. And I've looked into it. This particular has to do with master planning. It has to do with zoning and rezoning, comp plan amendments, and it, it has to do with the inspection for impervious concrete. But, and also has to do with public purposes. Okay, I hope he can hear that. So, so what I have written here is that, is that, and you've heard it before, is that, is that you've got so many errors. What in the world are you doing? You're just master planning and so forth. Your flood zones are way off. Just as, for example, I told, I said about this Baker subdivision, that, that it has erroneous flood zone that was finally corrected, and it's just, it's not one of a kind, it's one of many, not corrected. Parkland Estates is another one. Over there where Mr. Jordan lives, that's another one. So, so here's what I've written. Here's what, I'll just read it to you. It's what I just sent you today. It says, "For over 35 years, a cost and waste exceeding $100 million." This has to do with this one. The city of Tyresville, the space coast capital of the world, is a government based on secrets, phony baloney, and lies. The city of Tyresville has gassed the public for over 35 years with a cost and waste easily exceeding $100 million. Consider the time wasted for, for, over the past 35 years by staff and public on dishonest, erroneous flood zones, violations of FEMA regulations and city stormwater management plan, cover-ups, false reports that cover up the truth, for example, resilient Tyresville, surveys, dishonest, erroneous comp plans, et cetera. Consider cost and injury to homeowners, buyers, sellers, investors. Consider years spent by staff and council, years spent by staff and council on erroneous information, misapplication of Gaiman Hurdberg principle, you don't know what that is, well-filled alcohol problems, out-of-date limits of the area of critical concern that you're still using, established in 1985, and because it's due to new wells, abandonment of wells and so forth, you don't do it. Cover-ups, deceptions, and other nonsense. Consider where we are now with city's infrastructure compared to where we should be if staff over the years had been honest. Think of the lost opportunities of funding of, of, of funding a functioning, properly-maintained stormwater system and correction of erroneous AE flood zones. For example, the fake resilient Tyresville report may have already cost the city millions of dollars of lost funding to fund stormwater improvements, instead of funding these, a million dollars in these electrical thing, what do you call it? The waste cost of the well field south of State Road 50 alone easily cost, exceeds $12 million. I expect the waste cost to taxpayer due to erroneous flood zones to now, blank, 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 it's over.
Time's up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another minute, please? Nope.
I see none. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution M11, 2021, Community Development Fees.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Remember Stokel. I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Remember Robinson?
Yes.
Remember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Remember Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We move on to B.
Yes, sir. On to 12B. The Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan identified the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility as a project to receive funding for the design and construction of a treatment upgrades to the facility to reduce the current nutrient loading in the reclaimed water. The upgrades are designed to reduce the level of nitrogen in the reclaimed water by approximately 26,475 pounds per year. To date, the project has been awarded a grant of $9.1 million from the Save the, Save Our Indian River Lagoon Fund for the design and construction of the facility upgrades. The project has also been awarded a St. John's Water Management District cost share grant in the amount of $1,350,000. On April 24, 2018, the city was awarded a design project to CDM Smith. Since that time, CDM Smith has worked with the city to evaluate, select, and design a new treatment process to reduce nutrient loading. With the design complete, the project was bid for construction, including the following specific upgrades. New step feed treatment train, rehabilitation of existing treatment trains, addition of blowers, aluminum injection system, and a new electrical building. The bid for the above was described, work was advertised on October 23, 2020. 661 vendors were notified of the bid. 62 vendors obtained the bid documents. Eight vendors submitted sealed bids, which were opened on December 9, 2020. On January 22, 2021, a revised bid tabulation was posted. A review of the lowest bid responsive was Wharton Smith Incorporated, found that they met the requirements and were recommended by the engineer of record to construct the upgrades. It is recommended that city council approve the award of this contract to Wharton Smith Incorporated of Sanford, Florida, for the construction of the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility nutrient removal upgrade project in the amount of $9,537,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Mr. Stauffer and team would like to speak to counsel before you deliberate on this action.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. I'm Sean Stauffer, Water Resource Director. Tonight, I'm joined with Ashley Smith, our engineering manager. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank the team and also highlight just a few facts about this project. We've been working on it for quite a while. We appreciate counsel's support through this process. This is a very large project in size, but it's also, will create a huge benefit for the Indian River Lagoon. And I want to highlight that our estimate of the 26,000 pounds per year is a significant reduction in nitrogen through the processes at the plant. I think the other thing that's of note is that this project has been supported by two granting agencies, and we've received significant funding on this project. The current estimated cost for both design and construction, when you add that together and then you look at the grant funding, the total cost that we have so far, about nine, over 90% of the cost of this project will be funded by grants and will not be borne by our customers. So this is a huge win for the city, as well as our customers, moving forward and upgrading the Osprey plant. I also want to thank Ashley for her leadership in moving this project through. This is probably the most complicated and largest single project that we have worked on since the construction of the Blue Heron Plant in 1995. So I'd like to hand it over to Ashley right now for some additional info.
Thank you. And I just want to say that it takes a whole team. This is multiple groups from Water Resources, the Water Reclamation staff, Electronic Services, and our leadership. We couldn't have done this project and get to where we are today without all of those staff members. And also, CDM Smith, who's here with us tonight, our consulting engineer, made an excellent set of plans and specs for us to get to this point and ultimately construct this project, which is going to help the future of our lagoon.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
I'd also like to add, I believe representatives from Wharton Smith are also here as well. They are the potential receivers of the bid. And also, if we would like, whether that be CDM Smith or Wharton Smith, this would be an appropriate time to get up and say anything if, if they choose to do so.
Nope. 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 Said her a long time not to say anything.
And I can't underestimate the complexity of this project. We're, we're building the airplane as it's in the air. So it's, it's, it's.
Appreciate it.
Very complex operation, and we're very pleased.
Let me go in that direction. Remember Robinson?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Remember Stokel?
Sean, my question is actually in regards to the funding. When I was looking at the grants, it looks like the grants added up to more than the estimated cost. Could you just explain that?
Yes. So what we're, tonight, we're awarding the construction. There was also a significant effort of design, and so the, so the design, so when we add the design and the con, and the construction together, that then exceeds the amount of the grants.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for staff or contractors? No, call the cards, please.
We have two cards. Stan Johnston is the first one.
Stan Johnston, so we're building the airplane in the, oh, it's in, in the air. Wow. I'm not sure how comfortable I am with all that. I'm not too comfortable about Mr. Stauffer either. Understand, as I'm giving him phone calls early in December, began about December the 22nd, and he still hasn't returned my calls. That's interesting. My goodness. You know what? I bet you if I go ahead and make a complaint to what, to Human Resources about Mr. Stauffer's conduct, I bet you, Mr., there's this guy right here, what's his name? Mr. Larisse, he'll just tear it up and throw it away. Because it doesn't matter what I complain about, he'll just throw it away. Because that's the way the city works here. Now, as far as this project particular, we're talking about close to $11 million. Well, I expect it's well over $11 million. The 1.35 million added to that, to this SOIR-LPP, and I understand that means, Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan, while at the same time, we're spilling sewage into the Indian River. Well, that's pretty kind of strange, isn't it? In other words, we're going to spend about, we're, tonight, we're looking at spending about, well, another $9 million right there, which is actually some projects over $11 million. And, and right now, we're, we're dumping sewage into the Indian River. And we're going to get 1.35 million, I think, is from the SO, well, whatever it is. But I can't believe it. I can't believe we're doing this. It seems like it's just a lot of nonsense. In other words, we'll be spending that much money, yet we'll be going ahead and polluting the river, and he's in charge. This guy's in charge. Understand, on January the 12th, we had this council meeting, and by golly, he was saying all these reports and so forth like that, that we weren't, that with containment of Sandpoint Park, we got all these videos and photos and witnesses, and that it's not true, that he lied and lied and lied and lied and lied and lied. And yet, what are you going to, we're going to listen to what he has to say. Because he is our employee. Although, we've got all these witnesses saying he's lied, 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 and lied. And he keeps doing it. He gets away with it. Why don't we reward people for lying? Well, that's what we're doing. We pay, we pay the city manager for lying. My golly, big time. We pay him for lying. So anyhow, I'm fed up with it. So I'm against this project. I think, I don't even, we should think about, who's using the reclaimed water? Is it just the golf courses or something? Is that what this $10 million, because you should look at, who is using it? It's another waste of taxpayers' money. You'll spend it for good, for something, but it's a waste of money compared to what you could spend money for. A waste of taxpayer money. That's what this is. A boondoggle. We're going to design an airplane while it's, it's in the air or something.
Thank you.
I believe it. May I have another minute?
See none. No, sir.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Brett LaFever.
I knew that one topic would get us. That public and private. Good evening, guys. I'm Brett LaFever. I'm with the president of L7 Construction, Inc. We're a local contractor based out of Longwood, Florida. We have an ongoing relationship with the city going back over six years. We've done multiple projects on the water and wastewater side, including some, a current emergency repair on the DAF unit at the Osprey plant. Been in business for approximately 10 years, specializing in the water wastewater industry in the greater central Florida area. Previously, I was an owner at another local general contractor for 16 years, managing and overseeing much larger work. For those of you that don't know, we bid on the above Osprey project on December 9 and were the apparent low bidder at $9,193,107. On December 21, we received an invitation to bid tab with the intended award to L7 Construction. Then on January 21, we received another email, excuse me, from Ms. Chapman, which we, I thought, we thought would be the contracts for the project. However, much to our surprise, it was a rejection letter informing us we would not be getting the award, and we would be considered unresponsive. This was the only correspondence we had with the city regarding the change in award. No prior phone calls or emails to discuss. Once seen the original bid tabulation and the time passing for the protest, we had dedicated efforts towards moving forward with the project, including project setup and coordination. I reached out to Ms. Chapman for some further discussion, and then to Ms. Smith for some further conversations as well. So questions typically as to why would be deemed not qualified to do the work. Typically, you'd see those fall into experience, financial capacity, which would be bonding, or prior work. We provided three references with the bid, all of which stated that we did great work. They would like or love to have us do additional work. Even Ms. Chapman told me on the phone that all of our references spoke very highly of us. They would, we would have happily provided a further list of references for every project we've done and let the city contact each of them. However, this request was not made. With acceptable quality, exceeds expectations of most clients, we provided a bid bond showing that we had the financial capacity. Had the city reached out to our bonding company, they would have found that even with this award, we're only at approximately fifty percent of our capacity. We've worked at both the Morning Dove Plant and the Osprey Plant for the city in the past, building great relationships with the city's tremendous staff and design engineers, so much so that we've been contacted directly over the years to help with other issues or guidance on industry input or options to fix or correct issues. Just recently, in a conversation with the utility manager, the city, they said they found us in great standing and we're great to work with. After the bid, we heard from several vendors.
Hold up there, because I want to hear the end. How much more time do you need?
About halfway through this.
Give you two more minutes. Can I get two more minutes and hear this?
I'll skip through a few pieces.
Two more minutes, please.
I was informed the city's engineering department had approved the project being awarded to us, and engineer record didn't have an issue with it being awarded. Finally, the Osprey Plant staff was looking forward to us working with them. However, it came down to a legal department deeming us not to have the minimum qualifications required, having performed two major water plant projects as a prime contractor exceeding five million dollars. Of our three references provided, one of them was a single contract with Altamont, easily exceeding the ten million dollar mark. The second was the city of Palm Bay, which had multiple concurrent contracts on the same site with the same engineer, same staff, that totaled over five million. Palm Bay chooses to bid their projects by area or structure instead of larger projects, and we've completed actually over ten contracts on the same site over the past four years totaling over ten million dollars. The third was the city of Winter Garden, had two concurrent projects on the same site, same staff that totaled over five million dollars. So based on the city's interpretation and language in the RFP, the dollar amount of our projects alone, the city found that the best course of action is to award to the second bidder, Wharton Smith, and spend an additional three hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars for no added value in the project. The city doesn't get any additional work, they don't get additional structures, additional equipment, or any other benefit in paying the extra three hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. In both my conversations with Ms. Chapman and lawyers' conversations with the city's attorney, they both used the term "each" when describing the performed at least two major plant projects as the prime contractor in the RFP. We both pointed out to them that that was an interesting term and could definitely change the interpretation of the phrase. However, nowhere in the RFP is the term "each" used.
I think I have enough. So any questions for our man at the podium, Member Jordan?
Thank you. I appreciate you coming forward. I will tell you that I've had a lot of experience with contracts. I've had proposals where I've gone through the whole process, won them, and a few days later I was told I didn't get it, and one of the reasons was we didn't have the money to do it, and this was NASA, didn't have the money to do it, and it's very, very disappointing for sure. So the city has to be really careful about what it awards and what it doesn't award. And if there's a requirement to have a certain thing, and I understand you're getting with the word "each," but you're supposed to have, what, two or three different? Two, two of them, but you combine because you're at the same place to get to that level, right?
Right, to meet that dollar, to meet the dollar amount.
Believe me, I understand what you're doing, but you have to agree that it was supposed to be a contract, even though you're saying you don't like "each," it was supposed to be two different contracts. You combine two to make the five million dollars or whatever.
And I would agree if it said "contract," it says "project," and a project is a site you're working on, a project, doing work, same people, same staff, doing that, and that's what we ran it. We thought, we met, we felt we met the requirement. Otherwise, prior to the bid, we would have asked questions to, to see if we could alter or change that.
Yeah.
And so that's where we got to where we were with that dollar amount.
I can also, I honestly, I hear exactly what you're saying. I could almost concur with what you're saying, but on the other side, I could see your competitor saying, wait a minute, they didn't do the project, if you will, or contract to separate the two, and now they're contesting that we didn't abide by the rules that we have there. So we're kind of caught. I honestly, when you lose something, especially one as big as this, then you've got some concerns for sure. Since you've had experience with us before, have you ever gone over what the contract price was in the beginning? Have you had change orders, of course?
Change orders and stuff? I don't know exactly off the top of my head if we have.
I'm sure you have.
There's a chance, there's a chance that we have.
Right, right.
A lot of projects, a lot of times owners requested stuff, whatever, that goes above, so.
Right, right.
But we've done, you know, we have the ability to do it, and that's, and that's what, I'm not taking anything away from our competitors, they, they can do the work. But I, for me, I look at it to the city of Tidesville as, again, what added value are you getting? We've shown, you know, we've done prior work, we have a great relationship with the city on the projects we've done, they were happy about us doing the work. Our competitors had the opportunity to protest when the invitation to bid was initially out, and that, that time period passed, they didn't. And then a month later, there's also a note in the invitation to bid that says about rejections, disqualifications of bidders, E says, lack of competency of bidder, bidder will be considered ineligible if at any time during the process of receiving bids or investigating prior projects or awarding the contract, developments arise which in the opinion of the city adversely affects the bidder's responsibility. However, the bidder will be given an opportunity by the city to present additional evidence before final action is taken.
Okay.
And we were not get, we were never given that opportunity, but we were given the invitation to bid that said we were going to be awarded, or that the bid tab, I should say.
All right.
That we were going to be awarded. Forget what the time period was, but then we received the revised, and the same day that I got the revised tab, or was told about it, the next bidder was also told that they were going to be getting it, that within hours, or at the same time, I would assume. So I just.
So what do you want the resolution to be? That's a rhetorical question, I know what you want.
You know what it would be, I mean, ultimately, I mean, we're not here to burn bridges with the city. I mean, we've done prior work, we want to do additional work here, but we have the ability and the capability, and we've shown on other projects to do it. At Palm Bay, like I said, we've done, on the same site, same, Wade Trim does all their engineer, or has for years, working with them with the same crew doing, they just did, and they were concurrent. We had projects doing, doing a unit one, then a filter, then piping, and they were all going on concurrently. They just choose to bid their projects individually instead of lumping a bunch of, you know, all the structures together and doing multiple things. So I oppose it, you say, what, to the city, what's in the best interest of the city? When there's three hundred and forty, almost three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. So.
Staff, is there anything you want to say, and is this an apples-to-apples comparison? And I can't tell you that I know that, so I'm going to ask for you guys to give me, and I've been involved, not at this level, but I've been involved as an athletic director at a high school where I didn't necessarily take the low bid because I felt there was a difference. I don't know the ins and outs of all this, and maybe I can hear something here.
Sure. I'll just add that this really comes down to what was written in the bid documents. And so in the bid documents, we wrote that two projects exceeding five million dollars needed to be presented. And so when we were reviewing the projects that, for the apparent low bidder, which was L Seven, that is when it was determined that one of the projects, well, two of them technically, they submitted three, one met the criteria, the other two were a combination of projects, a combination of multiple solicited contracts that added up to exceed five million dollars. So you might wonder why we set that criteria, so I can give a little background on that. Typically, we take a look at the estimated cost estimate, and so that is where we did, we typically go about half of what we expect the cost of the construction to be and put that as the experience, which is why there was a five million dollar expectation for this project, estimating that it was going to be a ten million dollar project. So we went through purchasing and legal, and all of our parties determined that it did not meet the bid requirements because it was not one solicitation for those projects.
So, and I go back to, you were looking at apples and his bid was oranges, meaning it didn't meet the proper steps.
Exactly.
And I'm not quite sure I'm grasping that, but Member Stokel.
Yep. I do like the criteria, I think that's a good rationale. My question would be in regards to the second project. I hear, I think I hear what he's saying. Do you guys, when you see that, when you're trying to make that five million, do you take into account it may be multiple contracts for one project and put those together, or do you just go strictly based on contract?
In the past, it's always been based on contracts, which is why we went, when we were reviewing that, it came, it flagged to us that this was not one contract equalling five million dollars.
And I could see where his concern, if I was a business owner, then would come up if another municipality is doing it differently, and it's still one big project, and they just kind of, they still give him all of the contracts, but they want to separate out for financial purposes or auditing, whatever it may be. So that may be something to potentially clarify or look into in the future. I mean, if staff would agree.
I can speak on that. Since purchasing and I have come up with clear language to indicate that any of our future projects, the experience that's listed must be one, it must be based on one solicited project. If it requires three, then it must be three solicited projects, not a combination of projects, to equal that value that we set, so that that will be clarified in the future.
So you guys wouldn't, you're clarifying that you want to accept multiple contracts that equal one project?
No, the intent that we do want to do, if we're having a ten million dollar project, we do want to know a contractor has done a project that is indeed valued at five million dollars, and in this case, two projects. These are large projects, and I'm not saying L Seven is not capable of doing this project, but we want to make, we set those criteria to make sure that we're getting contractors who are experienced doing that, experienced at keeping our plants in operation, because that's critical while we have all these moving pieces and parts.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. I just want to make sure that we're not penalizing someone because they have potentially done the work and it's just documented differently. You know what I'm saying? I just, that's my concern, because I, and honest, I do feel like we're kind of, I don't know. I feel like, based on how we have it written now, I, I don't know, I feel like going with who we already awarded it to because that is the threshold, and that's kind of what we have written. However, I see what you're saying, and I would like to make it a little bit more clear. I'd like us to be able to save money for our taxpayers, but yeah.
And that's what, when I spoke with Ms. Chapman in purchasing on the phone line, I said, so you want to see, when I, after I got the notice, and I said, you want to see that, that the contractor has the resources to do the work on a single project site that totaled this amount, that we have the bonding, we have, that they would have, and she said, yes, exactly. And I said, that's what we've done. We've done that with Palm Bay as well. It was just three separate contracts or solicitations.
And that, that makes sense. What I don't want to see happen is somebody pulling together, oh, I did this contract over here, I did this contract, and they're all unrelated, not part of a one big project. And that would be my concern.
And I would agree with that. And that's why we said, no, it's the same owner, same engineer, same crews, same project manager, same pieces that all assembled that. And some other municipalities, some do a dollar amount criteria, some do, some don't list a dollar amount criteria on previous work, they'll list types of work because they want to know that you've done that type of work specifically, that if you can install a thousand diffusers, you can install two thousand diffusers. It's just more of a quantity, and one of the things with the dollars, like this project, I think, is sixteen months or eighteen month duration, that, you know, if you said, hey, we've done, we didn't do a five million dollar or larger job over eighteen months, but we did a two million, a one million, and a two million, you could arguably, arguably say that doing three individual projects is more difficult than doing one of a larger amount because you have all those additional pieces involved, so.
I hear you, no, I do hear you. That's just kind of, and it's up to you guys here, that's kind of where I'm leaning, is to kind of keep it with who we did award it to, but I would like to not lose the intent, I think, of what we're hoping to accomplish in the future. And yeah, it's a little disappointing that this did happen, so anything we can do to make it a little clearer.
Right. I feel if we were a new contractor you guys had never worked with, and there's some of those out there that, hey, we don't know their track record, we don't know who they are, we don't know, and I could, all those reasons, you say like, oh, that makes sense, that, for you guys and for them, that makes more sense, but when it's somebody's known, we've worked at this Osprey Plant several years back, we built clarifiers and pump stations and stuff there, and we had a great relationship with the team, and things worked well. And then we also did work at the, over at the Morning Dove Water Plant as well. And again, so that's, it's, hey, to me, if you have a known contractor, known personnel, known track record, as in, you know, you guys would, and they provide the best cost, that's kind of like a win-win. Like, if you're in your personal, you say, hey, we want to get this work done, and we're going to get, and we know this person, they've done good work, and they have the lowest price, but we're going to go with these guys. I mean, that's.
But you do understand, at least what I'm hearing, it's, and Member Jordan, I thought, expressed it well, as staff did, it's a little different than just apples-to-apples, where it sounds like you had a combo of projects to get to the threshold. And I'm not saying that's good, I'm not saying that's bad, but when it comes to perhaps the rules of the bid, that didn't meet it. And again, I'm kind of saying that as a, is that where I'm at here?
Yes.
Because it's not just a matter of, and I don't want to come across a matter of same exact project, same exact presentation, the difference was you were three hundred thousand dollars lower, when in fact, that's not the way it was. What it was, was a combination of projects that got them to that threshold as opposed to the way you wanted it in the, in the bid.
Yes, as opposed to, as an example, Wharton Smith submitted three projects. Each project was more than five million dollars, one solicitation for each of those projects.
Okay.
Which is the requirement.
Member Robinson?
Yes, working in contract in, out of Washington for a number of years, and I understand, as Member Jordan, I understand your position, but in viewing contracts over the years, it's sometimes that you have to, because of the ability of all of the individuals or agencies or companies submitting bid are basically on the same level. And to be fair and to stay out of legal trouble, you have to go by the letters of the contract. There is no other way to go. I understand your disappointment, I understand where you are, been there, done that, had two bags of chips and grape soda while I was doing it, but at the same time, but the letters of the law, what the contract says, that's what it has to be.
Thank you. Member Jordan?
Oh, my God. You know, I really want you to leave happy, but you're not. And I hate to say it like that, but I think Member Robinson said it right. You know, we've got requirements in our proposals, we had to go with the letter of the law, even though you disagree because you really focused on the word "each," but that really wasn't your right to focus on each, you had to focus on what the proposal request was, and it was different than what you understood. So there was a communication problem there, but unfortunately, and I knew you were disappointed because you got a letter that says you were awarded, and then you got kicked in the butt with a new letter that says, no, you weren't. So of course, you're doing the right thing, you're saying, I protest this, I'm coming forward to council to plead my case, but the bottom line is I think the right people won based on the criteria we had, and we can stay out of trouble, because even though you're the lowest bidder right now, if we would turn around and do something differently, that three hundred thousand dollars that is different, we'll use that in attorney fees easy, and we'll find ourselves someplace else. So don't feel bad for us or yourself. Next time something comes up, I'll make sure you bid on it for sure, because we do have experience with you, and we don't want to lose that relationship for sure, so. Just go home and kick the cat or something.
No, no, don't do that.
Oh, no, kick.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? I see no other questions, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. With that, if there's no more questions for staff, or then we have a, look for a motion to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the water contract for construction of the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility Nutrient Removal Upgrade Project.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
Yes, sir. The next item is Item thirteen, petitions and requests from the public and non-agenda items.
Anybody who hasn't spoken yet want to speak? I see none. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We're on mayor and council reports. Mayor's report is first.
I'll let them move on out of here. They don't want to hear mayor's report. My stuff is included, it didn't used to be, now it's included, so you can look at it in the packet, but basically, as I was telling somebody today, that, you know, it's kind of like being a head football coach, you got the big game, this was the big game, and then you got all these other little things along the way that nobody knows. along the way that nobody knows about. So, I can tell you that, what was that, City Manager, Monday morning, Tuesday morning, we were at Great Outdoors with Chamber?
Uh, that was last week, sir. Believe it or not.
No, it wasn't last week. Was that last week?
Yes, sir.
That was last Monday, it was last Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Because I didn't make rotary.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, there we go. It's, it's getting late, Member Jordan.
I know.
I know you know. But anyway, I would say City Manager and I do a pretty good tag team, and we talked about the economy and Titusville and the good things that are going on, and, you know, one of the things I talked about, gave a PowerPoint, and I'll just say here, that I, I've always been this way, but especially as a council member and the mayor now especially, I am definitely a parking lot monitor. And I want to know how many, when I leave here, I'll check, although it's getting late. I want to see how many cars are in, in each restaurant's parking lot. I want to see how many are in front of Hobby Lobby. Now, there won't be any tonight, but normally. And I will tell you that I really feel like the real feel that our citizens have is that we're doing well, and especially compared to other people during this virus. I think that we have done very well, and that was just one thing I was pretty excited about, because I think we got a lot of feedback from Chamber people after we spoke. I had the new manager of Staples come and speak to me and wants me to come by, and the new manager at Walmart. And I said, I want to talk to you because your parking lot's really good. So, and on top of that, one last thing I'll say is I cannot wait because very soon Popeyes will be open, and I won't have to talk about that other chicken place for a while. I'll just leave it at that. I'm not going to say, Member Robinson? Oh, and Member Robinson and I were.
I'm not a Popeyes fan, so, so, but I'm going to buy it occasionally.
I, I'm not going to argue about it, but it's a whole lot bigger chicken sandwich than some of those other places that get a lot of PR. Before that, because I just saw, uh, Member Robinson, Member Robinson and I went to the, what did we call it, City Revival? City, Citywide Revival on Saturday, and it was wonderful, and it was real windy. So, uh, Member Nelson?
Okay, something halfway serious. I enjoyed the presentation that Public Works did to T E C. How do you guys feel about it? Would you guys want to hear it?
I don't, you know, the presentation, that doesn't tell me what it is, what it's about, what's important to.
They were talking about stormwater, storm, how to control stormwater, how to make it better.
I'm certainly for stormwater, but I, I don't think anybody's talking more about stormwater than this council.
Oh, I know.
And I mean, I almost feel like we need a break. Don't misunderstand me. Don't misunderstand me. It's extremely important, and we all know the seriousness of it.
I just.
And I'm getting ready to meet with Ms. St. Anne, and, and I'm sure we're going to have a long talk about stormwater, et cetera, and I want to hear it, but I'd almost rather do it individually right now.
Okay.
And then after we do it individually, and I don't know if you guys are going to meet with her or not, but if you do, after that, you might come back and say, hey, let's do that presentation, I want to hear more, or you might say, you know what, that was a whole lot better individually than bringing it to the meeting. That's just my thought.
And I, I will tell you this, and I know she's going to meet with everybody, but what was interesting, when I was listening to the people from Public Works talking to T E C, they were talking about what things decrease the amount of nutrients going into the river, what is better than other things. It was, it was really a good change.
Maybe it's different than anything we'll hear. I would still like to meet with Ms. St. Anne first. It sounds like we could certainly do that at a five-thirty presentation meeting.
Yeah.
I'm all for that, I'm not opposed to. I've gone to more environmental meetings than I've ever gone to in my life. I mean, if there's something with the ecology or environment, whether it be on, on, online or FaceTime or whatever, and, you know, we've got some good speakers in this area, too. So, Laura Lee, I, I try to find out where she's speaking. So, with that said, I'm for it. I'd like to meet with Ms. St. Anne first, and then I think that surely it can be during a presentation. How long do you think it is?
I'm thinking maybe ten, fifteen minutes.
We, we geared that presentation to T E C from what they asked us to provide.
Right.
So, we can provide whatever council wishes to be updated on. I sent you an update on our baffle boxes so that you understood what a baffle box, how many we have. You know, they're engineered to cover basins, so it's just not throw a baffle box at an outfall. There's a rationale, and there's an engineering basis for the establishment of a baffle box. Kevin and Sandy will describe the tools that are available for nutrient removal, to which we, by B map wise, we are ten years ahead of schedule.
Right.
So, I think we're doing everything possible for stormwater.
Well, then, let's do it. I mean, because it sounds different than what I'll get in my individual meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot about, this is, this, these are different ways. I never realized baffle boxes came in different sizes.
Yeah, you have to engineer them for the basin that you're trying to do the outfall for, and they, and they range in cost and size. You know, the average one is about three hundred and fifty thousand, but there's bigger ones. We have one outfall basin area that we couldn't put one baffle box in, so they engineered three smaller ones. But, and again, they have to be maintained during, especially the rainy season, you're going to be out pumping them, each one of those every month, so they have to be clean. That, that's a good thing because we're catching nutrients and we're catching stuff as they come out. Something that people don't even realize is we run two sweet, uh, street sweepers continuously. That's a, a huge removal of stuff that's put out in the street, and I don't know how many times you've driven by a law and service person that's blowing the, the clippings out into the street. Well, where do they go? They go into stormwater. So, yeah, we have many options, and we can certainly provide council a presentation to update you on stormwater, because it is very important, and it's, the lagoon is one of your top priorities.
I probably wasn't as quick to say yes to another presentation at ten oh five. So, that being said, but that being said, it sounds very valuable, and it sounds like he can get a lot in in fifteen or twenty minutes, and, you know, I think, I'm looking forward to meeting with Ms. St. Anne, I really am, and I'd like to meet with Ms. Laura Lee again, I really do, but that presentation sounds like a whole different angle.
It was, it was something totally different.
Well, I'm for it.
So, I mean.
Yeah, I'm for it.
What I said earlier was, I never realized that, I'm sorry, I never realized that stormwater ponds are not as effective. When you think about it, we're putting in stormwater ponds, and we think that they're effective, and according to Public Works, they're not as effective as our baffle boxes. So, they were just telling me things that I, I just found interesting.
Sure, and we have different ways to store stormwater. The park across from Eli and Cito's, we, we store the stormwater underground. There's different technologies that we can use in order to do that, but the bottom line is we're doing everything we think is possible to, to protect our lagoon.
I, I agree, and I think part of the problem is, you look at the cities down south, and they have, the tide comes in, cleans it out, and takes everything out. Up here, we don't have that luxury of having the tide come in, clean out the river, so we're sort of like climbing uphill where everybody, nobody else is.
Yes, ma'am. Agree?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. I, I look forward to that. Uh, anybody else have anything they want to report?
Let me make this quick, because I'm, I'm definitely sleepy, and I got someplace else to go. At the last T P O, of course, myself and, and Councilman Robertson are representative for North Pervard, and they, for some reason, decided that I need to be secretary for this thing, so I'm the new secretary for T P O.
You can't help it.
And some, someone nominated Councilman Robertson for one of the M P O spots, and he got that, so we are representing, Titusville is being represented on the T P O, which is an important thing for sure. And of course, you know, one of the major projects that we're working on is the replacement of the NASA Council Bridge, which has been fully funded, so that's going to be exciting project.
Yeah, it's coming quick, isn't it?
Yeah, it's pretty quick, for sure, so. Also, I wanted to mention, there were some rumors out there about why the flags were being flown at half-staff. It is because of President Joe Biden remembering the five hundred thousand plus citizens that have lost their lives to COVID, so they'll be flown at half-staff until the twenty-sixth of this month.
Very good. Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Anybody else? City Manager?
Yes, sir. No action items. I, I do have a couple of information items. Again, our strategic planning community conversation is this Saturday, the twenty-seventh, between nine and twelve here in, in Chambers. I, I did provide an update as part of my report as of fifteen February, and what, what we try, Staff tried to address is many of the questions that we field, such as unemployment rates and things like that, as well as weaving in some other information items like the farmer's market. Two items I would like to remind council of, CNN did place the city of Titusville in our metropolitan statistic area, the Space Coast, as in the nineteen top places to visit in the world. Second, our metropolitan statistic area ranked in the top twenty-five of the most dynamic metropolitan regions in the United States. And this week, the Milken Index ranked our city as, in our M S A, our metropolitan statistic area, as the second-best performing American city. So, those are three things that I think we all should be very proud of. Our, of course, it is our metropolitan statistic area, so it's the, the ability to compare regions with big cities, so that big cities don't always shine. So, we were ranked in the Milken Index last year as tenth, and we've gone to two. So, that's an amazing feat. We did put out a couple of press releases, the E D C's was picked up on that, but I just don't want us to forget about CNN's placing in the, the second, the most dynamic metropolitan regions in the United States. I think those are amazing things. And I would like to highlight several questions about our unemployment rate. As of December twenty twenty, our metropolitan statistic area, our unemployment rate is four point eight percent. It, it, compared to a statewide average of six point one percent. Our low point of unemployment was in December two thousand and nineteen, which was two point seven percent, and that was probably the lowest we've seen in history. Our high point during the pandemic happened in April when we were shut down, and that unemployment rate was twelve point eight percent. So, from April of two thousand and twenty to, to December, we've gone from twelve point eight to four point eight. So, I think, you know, as, as has stated in the past, we are recovering. We're not out of the, the COVID experience yet. I think we'll still see some changes in how retail is done in the future, and I, I think that there will be some changing dynamics on how people are employed as well. So, with that subject to your questions, I will be out of the area beginning Thursday night, returning on Sunday. Mr. Bate will do the Saturday meeting for you. So, thank you very much.
Nine to noon, just so. I got confused, I got confused one year, so to pay the clock, I was like, oh, no meeting.
I had a question.
Um, Member Stokel?
Um, I appreciate this list that you gave us because that is very informative, and I know I'll have some citizens ask some questions. Do you have an update on the Chipotle coming to Titus Landing? Because I know that was talked about before, and they had inquired, is there any new updates with that one?
We have had meetings with that organization, and they have selected a location in Titus Landing.
Okay. It's just exciting to look at this list, especially given our current times right now, so I appreciate everything Staff's doing to really try to get some stuff here.
City Attorney?
No.
You're the, you're the M V P of the day. All right, with that, Saturday morning, we will be here, nine o'clock, meeting adjourned.